Your newspapers posted on the first floor bulletin board in city hall and filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
For the record, Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg will be present on virtually. Yes. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilman Harrison is excused from this meeting this evening. Councilwoman Williams.
Present y presente.
Council President Gonzalez.
Presente.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Mr. Edward Cologie, Legislative Council. And Mr. Bridges City Attorney is en route. And Madam President, if you'd like, I can read the invocation at this time.
Yes, please.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, it's my understanding at this time, in lieu of presentations, we have some individuals who have recently applied to some of our boards and commissions, and it's my understanding that you'd like to hear from them at this time?
Yes, please.
Certainly. We can start with regarding Resolution 25074 for Trenton Parking Authority, Ms. Marge Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes. I see she's here.
If you'd like to approach, thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, Ms. Caldwell, we wanted to just invite you up if you wanted to say a few words on why you wanted to apply for the parking authority board?
When I served on city council for eight years or more, I served as the liaison to Trenton Parking Authority. And the feedback I've been getting is that they've been having a lot of issues with some of the board members. And I actually enjoyed working with them and dealing with them in their economic state right now, so I would like to go back on the parking authority and try and work with them and encourage them to deal with the garage that is closed and get more involved with the community.
Thank you so much. Are there any council members who wish to?
Madam President?
If you have any questions, yes, want to go Councilwoman Williams first, and then Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Council, former, I'm sorry, Ms. Cardinal Wilson, I'm very happy to see you step up to do this because we need good people, people who know our city, know a lot of things that are happening, and also the opportunities and some of the issues that can be corrected. And to have someone of your stature step up and want to be able to be part of solutions, that's very gratifying, and I hope to see more Trentonians step up similarly. So, the only question I have for you is, as far as some of the issues that you've observed over the years with Trenton Parking Authority, with garages, are there any particular parts of those issues that you'd like to see the Parking Authority maybe handle in the coming year or two?
I certainly would like to think that that garage would be a priority because it's an eyesore, it's a danger, and I know it's all financial, but they were working on that when I was on the Parking Authority, and it has gone nowhere. But I'm only one vote on the Parking Authority, so, but I hopefully will have a voice, you know, to move that forward, you know?
And do you think there are any, actually, I'm ready to see my question.
Yeah, I think that, I think the Parking Authority has a great opportunity for advertising, for light-up signs in the garages, wayfinders to the Parking Authority, and also, I don't know if they're online now, I don't know if someone can get their parking on their phone. So, there's a lot of things I have an interest, but I have to be on the authority to see where they're at and what they're dealing with, what their priorities are.
Well, thank you very much. I'm really glad to hear all that, and you have my full support, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President. So, I just wanted to say, thank you for stepping forward and for becoming a part of what we're hopeful to be solutions as it comes to dealing with the Trenton Parking Authority, and thank you for your former service, that you served the city, and then for stepping up to continue your service to help us to get things in order. So, we're excited to have you be a part of. I am excited, I'm sorry, we have to vote. I am excited and hopeful that this will, this will go through. You have my full support as well. Thank you.
And if I can just say something is, the one thing that I always had a problem with was the way the Parking Authority did not come to council and give reports on occasions, and I'm going to try and push for them to do that.
I want, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Edwards, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, it's a pleasure to see you today. I just wanted to say, just to your comments about making the garage on Front Street across from Mill Hill a priority is definitely commendable. We, I'm speaking for myself, would definitely love to see that be a priority. I think I could almost speak for this entire council that that is something that we have been constantly talking about, that we need to address downtown. It's one of the, if not the largest property downtown, next to a couple of other things that we have going on that are finally seeing some redevelopment that is at a standstill. And so, from what I understand, EDA may have some funding to demolish the parking garage and that, but they would need site control in order to do it, but there's something going on with the Parking Authority, and they haven't gotten to that point yet. So, I'm hoping that, you know, if you were to be appointed today, that we can see some type of something there, some action there to move that forward, because we definitely need that garage to be demolished, or something needs to happen to it, but it's an eyesore downtown.
I know, I know that several years ago, the state had awarded them money, but it wasn't enough for demolition, for the whole demolition. So, that's where they ran into a problem, where could they get the other funding? So, hopefully, they'll fill me in and all of that.
You are, you are correct, and that money is still there for the most part, but there is additional funding from what I'm hearing through the grapevine. So, hopefully, it's enough to be able to demolish the entire structure, and so, we can get a move on with getting the developer there very soon.
Yeah, and I really think that the Packing Authority Chair should come to this council and give a report.
I agree.
And that, one of my first suggestions.
That would be a wonderful change.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
So, Ms. Caldwell, I just want to also just thank you really quickly for, you know, coming up and stepping up to be a part of the board. With your expertise, we would appreciate that. As we know, you have plenty of experience, so, we are looking forward to that. And as I, as my council colleague said, I'm also in agreement with that being a priority as far as the parking lot on Front Street, so, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
On your call, Madam President.
Oh, we're not, we're gonna just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We just wanted to hear from her. We're gonna keep it on, oh, can we do it as consent? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no.
We're gonna ask for the next person, or we wanna vote on it.
That's what I was gonna ask for, was the next person.
Yeah, the next person.
Okay.
Yeah, then we're gonna, yeah.
At this time, Mr. Mark Mattson in the audience? Mr. Mattson? Madam President, I did contact Mr. Mattson, Mattson earlier today. I did leave a message with him. I was in contact with him prior to this meeting along with the Council Vice President. We did ensure him that his resolution would be discussed or considered today. He apparently is not here at this time. I will note, I will note that he did express, he did express a lot of interest within the board. That's all I can tell you.
Yes, Council Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Garcia is correct, and he did say or asked if we could call him if he can't make it, if that's an option.
I would, I think because everyone else came in person, I think we should just give him the, I would, I would rather him be in person, personally.
Very well understood.
Thank you. Maybe we can figure out another date that works for him, but since everyone else had to come in person, so, should we motion that? To tape, yeah, so, can I have a motion to table, Mr. Madison?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman, excuse me, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Council President? Are we, are we tabling this until the next meeting, or are we tabling this indefinitely? I just, can we have a timeline, ma'am?
We can have a timeline, but I wanted to see what date would work for him, so, we'll push it back to the next meeting for now, and if, and if he doesn't, then we may have to table it indefinitely.
That's till the next public meeting, correct?
Next public meeting, which is March 4th, I believe.
Thank you. Tabled until 3/4. We had a motion to second, a yes from Vice President Edwards. We were at Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Matter is tabled until March 4th. Moving on with the agenda, Council President, I believe that brings us to public comment for agenda items only.
Yes.
If I could have that clipboard, please. And Madam President?
Madam President?
Agenda items for. I'm getting an echo, I'm sorry. Somebody can take off their audio. Okay. Thank you. Again, Madam President, at this time, I do not have any member, anybody signed up for public comment in reference to agenda docket items only. We can move forward past that to approval of communications petitions and reports. If you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Petitions and reports.
Thank you. I heard that was a move by Feliciano and second by?
Frisbee.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And, excuse me. That will move us, I apologize, to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 25-001, an ordinance amending Chapter 132, Article 17, Section 135 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Trenton to increase the cost for lead safe inspections and add a filing fee for lead safe certificates. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve, ordinance 25001?
So moved.
Second.
Noted.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
If I'm not mistaken, did we not ask for an updated sheet with strike-throughs of the former? Did we receive that, Mr. Garcia?
Not that I'm aware of, I'll be honest. Was it sent? Okay. And the item was, I'm sorry, was it, it was emailed?
Just to see what the, the change of the fees were.
My apologies, I'm being informed that it was emailed, that for some reason, I failed to disseminate that to you, I do apologize. I'll defer to BA Richardson if possible. Is that possible at this time, or is there, I don't, I don't have that item on file, I do apologize.
I don't have my laptop either.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano, Director Liston, come in.
I was gonna say, yeah, so the, so basically, the, the ordinance calls for a $50 difference in each, in each item?
Yes.
Okay.
And there were documents forwarded for everything that was requested. Let me explain this ordinance to you, this is kind of a weird ordinance situation. We're required, and the state requires this inspection of rental apartments. The market can do this cheaper than we can. So, what we, our expenses to cover our costs are higher than the market. What we're doing here is we're trying to cover the city's costs to do these, along with filing fees required to do with the state. What will happen is by raising our fees, it will probably force many of their landlords to go to the private market to do this. Since we're not making money on it, them going to the private market would probably reduce our workload and reduce their costs for renters. So, that's the major reason that we, we need to cover our costs, but also, it has the effect of pushing it into the market, which I think is, is, since it's substantially increased our workload with lead inspections with renters, I just think it makes a smart move for us to reduce our workload and still cover our costs of what we need to do. Yet, they come to us.
Madam President, so, what I was gonna suggest, if it, if it pleases the body, is that since one, it was already emailed to the clerk with the adjustments, that we have the clerk read into the record what the amounts are to state the increased amounts with the extra $50 per item, and then we can vote on that tonight, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Clerk, do you have, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Garcia, do you have your laptop available with the information?
What I, what I do seem to have here is a email, I believe, from the HED Department showing the fees in Mercer County, Trenton, and Lawrence. Is that what we were referring to?
Right.
Okay, I've just sent that to council. And then, as far as the amended.
I think that it came up in Doc View as far as what the surrounding areas were charging also.
One moment, I can just go ahead and read this now. I have it. In Section 1A, fees associated with lead paint inspection by municipal inspector shall be as follows. Under type of property, one-bedroom unit from 300 to 350, two-bedroom unit, 350 to 400, three-bedroom unit, 400 to 450, four-bedroom unit, 450 to 500, five or more bedroom unit, $500 to, from $500 to $600, and reinspection flat fee, $300. I see an additional filing fee of only, of fee of $50 shall be assessed for each lead safe certification submitted, plus a $20 fee required in accordance with NJSA 52:27D 437.6 and NJAC 5:28A-2.2 to be deposited into Lead Hazard Control Assistance Act Fund under administration, excuse me, administration of New Jersey State Department of Community Affairs. Shall I continue?
No, I think that's fine, you did the fees. Thank you so much.
Madam President?
Yes, Council Vice President?
Thank you. Mr. Liston, Director Liston, how often are these lead inspections required to happen?
Every three years.
Or in between tenants, correct?
Right.
Or in between tenants.
Thank you, Director Liston. Oh, sorry, did Councilwoman Williams?
If Councilwoman Edwards was finished.
Oh, are you gonna, Council Vice President?
I was just reading through, and I don't see, and I could be just simply overlooking it, but I don't see the specifications of every three years. It does say at tenant turnover for lead-based paint hazards, but I don't see where it's required for every three years or the turnover.
It's statutory.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Is it too much to ask for that to be included in a language in the event that people don't look up the NJSA to see those specifications?
We could amend the ordinance on second reading, it's not substantial, and it can be added in there, if that's okay with my psychology and the material, yeah.
So, we can add that to the second reading ordinance? Okay. Second reading? Okay. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. My concern is just, you know, not everyone is savvy with looking up state statutes, so, we just, I just wanted to be in layman's terms right here when you first see it.
We'll cover that.
Yep.
Council, Council President?
One second, I, Council, I want, Council, Williams.
I just want to counsel Vice President to read in the change that she's asking for, so that Mr. Garcia can note it accordingly before we jump down, if that's okay?
Okay, certainly. So, in the first paragraph, the first where it asks, where it says pursuant to PL 2021 C182 NJSA 52:27D-437.16 at, all municipalities in the state of New Jersey are required to inspect every single-family, two-family, and multi-rental dwelling located within municipality every three years or at tenant turnover for lead-based paint hazards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feliciano. Are you finished, Council Vice President? Councilwoman Williams?
Thank Council President. So, Director, I just want to make sure for the public who may be watching, or, you know, dissemination, just my, also my understanding from me, so, what you said earlier was, because of the way the cost factors are in actually conducting inspections, we want to push more inspections onto the private industry in order to get more inspections done, is that correct?
Well, not more, it would be cheaper for the landlord to do it that way, which also would reduce or not cause increases in rent to our tenants, which one of the things we're really kind of focused on with rent stabilization. So, if we can make it cheaper for the landlord, he won't be able to, he or she will not be able to pass it on to the renter.
Okay, but I thought I did hear you say earlier that we're not able to keep up with how many inspections there are?
We're, we're able to do it. Now, we are.
We are?
Yeah, we are able to do them, and actually, we're doing it very effectively, but it does create a substantial amount of paperwork in the fact that after we do the inspections, our people have to come back, and then we have to upload everything into the DCA database on this, so, there's, and there's, you'll see an increase in the fee there that will be charged to the private side, so, because we have to perform that task.
Okay, and the quality level of the inspection itself, how extensive and diligent that inspection is, is that at, for sure, for the public's safety of mind, at the same quality level as a City of Trenton-led inspection, and even maybe better?
Not better.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
Not better, but, however, we are very, very, I have to give Chief Esquoz credit, we're very diligent at monitoring the way it's being done. Every seal has to be wiped, the analysis has to be sent out, and has to be certified by a lab and sent back to us for certification, and we follow up on that to make sure, and I know that on a regular basis, if something's not done properly in the private side, that we do reject and send it back to be redone.
Okay, so, monitoring the various private companies?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other Councilwoman, Councilmember? Okay. Thank you, Director Liston.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, if there's no other discussion, actually, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that ordinance once again is amended?
Yes, may I have a motion to approve 25-001 with the amendment adding the language of every three years or at tenant turnover for lead-based paint hazards?
So moved.
Thank you. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-003, an ordinance granting renewal of municipal consent to Comcast of Mercer County LLC to construct, connect, operate, and maintain a cable television and communication system in the municipality of Trenton, Mercer County, New Jersey. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-004, calendar, calendar year 2025 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 484-45, uh, point, 4514, in the amount of $7,193,381.87. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez, excuse me. I apologize.
You missed Frisbee.
Councilwoman, apologies. That would be Council President Gonzalez. I did take a vote from.
I think you missed Frisbee.
Councilwoman Frisbee is who I missed. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Thank you, I do apologize. I was, Councilwoman Williams, could I have a yes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and Council President Gonzalez, I apologize.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to resolutions. Madam President, are there any resolutions at this time, with the exception of the settlement on your agenda, on your docket, that you wish to extract for questions or possible consent agenda?
Yes, are there any council members who wish to ask any questions?
Council President? One second, I'm sorry. I have stuff with questions, but I had some questions that weren't answered, I'm just, I don't want to re-ask what I don't need to ask. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Council President?
Council President?
Yes. Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg?
Thank you. 25046, 048, 052, 069, 071.
058, 062, and 071, she said?
No, not 05, 048, 046, 048, 052.
48.
069, and 071. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. I have questions regarding 043?
043.
046? 073?
073, uh-huh.
Then. Then 048?
Miss one here, uh-huh.
050? 054, 055, 056, 057, I think it could be done all at the same time. And then 069 and 071. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? You okay? Okay, I think they have already been called.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I also did want to ask 25-069 as well. I'm sorry.
69. It's already on there. Or Mr. Garcia, if you can go in order? It looks like most of them.
Certainly, it appears the first resolution for questions will be 043?
043.
Thank you.
Before we do that, Mr. Garcia, is it okay if I make a motion just to, to vote on 25-074, just in case Ms. Caldwell had to leave this evening?
Certainly. Is there a motion, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve 25-074?
So moved.
Second.
That was, I'm sorry, that was moved by whom?
Feliciano.
And the second?
Frisbee.
I'm sorry, Frisbee, thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Congratulations. So we can move on to 25-043, I believe, Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you.
Let me start.
Thank you, Council President. Just something minute I had sent over regarding the, the title in it, was it amended to reflect to execute the memorandum of understanding between the City of Trenton and the Harvest State Group LLC for the Roebling Complex Redevelopment Plan Area?
Do you want to amend the the title?
Yeah, it was minute, I had sent, I'd sent it over. So that we knew what was going on, yes, that you have the conditional developer named in it, yes, that it was in the Harvest Group LLC for the Roebling Complex Redevelopment Plan Area. Yeah, in the title.
So she wants it to reflect in the title?
Okay.
Yeah, it should say Resolution Appointing Conditional Redeveloper and Authorizing Execution of Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Trenton and the Harvest State Group LLC for the Roebling Complex Redevelopment Plan Area.
Council President, if, if it's acceptable to the body, maybe we can read that amendment into the record now and have it amended as such for voting upon tonight?
Right.
That's fine.
I thought that's what I was going. Thought that's what I did. That's why I read it again. Thank you.
That was a co-sign from the solicitor.
So can we have that read into the record for the amendment when we get ready to vote? Mr. Garcia?
Yes, if I have that verbiage, I'd be happy to read it into the record for the vote at that time.
See the name of the developer?
I'm sorry?
It's after memorandum of understanding between the City of Trenton and the Harvest State Group LLC for the Roebling Complex Redevelopment Plan Area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
That was all I had on.
That's all, yeah. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So I have a couple of questions, because a few folks have brought some things to my attention that they're concerned about. And I just want to get some information on the record. So regarding the MOU, and there is a, going to be a payment of $50,000?
In escrow.
In escrow, yes. Can you just talk about that briefly, so folks in the public know what that means? And this is not an unusual occurrence, is that correct?
No, this is the proper way when you start a redevelopment project is what you do is you have the redeeapper escrow funds for the city. So while they do their due diligence and we work with them on their due diligence with our professionals, our engineers, our environmental people, our lawyers, that we actually charge the cost to the escrow account. So the taxpayer doesn't incur this. And the understanding of this resolution, this is a first step and that this is not a contract. Basically, what we're saying here is we're going to work with them over the next 180 days on their due diligence and then we would come back to the group, the redevelopment entity, which is the city council. And then we would negotiate, if they will, are willing to go on with the redevelopment, we would negotiate price, we would negotiate conditions of the redevelopment, timeframes, and how council wishes to make it the best possible project for the community.
Okay, and they would have exclusive rights to come up with a plan or do all their due diligence about environmental issues or anything else during this 180 days?
That's correct.
Without, and at this point, any other parties who have an interest in maybe developing this property, they have to wait until after the 180 days are over to present their plans.
Like the first option.
Okay, and how many other developers submitted plans or approached the city regarding this?
And we've had a lot of interests. We had one other plan that came through and when we vetted it, they did not have the background experience as this group did. And this is an established group. I've done major projects through South Jersey and North Jersey. We had them vetted through our legal counsel, who's familiar with them, knows their record in Glassboro, Gloucester County, and other locations. So this is a major group. And if we can possibly get them to go forward with this project all the way through, this would make substantial changes in the, in the community and create a lot of commerce within the Roebling Two area.
Okay, and then final question, as far as preservation of the Roebling buildings for any development project, that would be the purview of the City of Trenton ultimately?
Absolutely, that falls within the purview of the redevelopment entity. So you can say, we want this, we want this. And one of the his, parts of this project, I know the council's very wants to consider is the fact maintaining the historic character of the buildings. And even matching buildings, they may build new or something, you would want them to match the whole facility.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Is everyone okay with this going on, Cassette? You good? Thank you. The next one, I believe, is 25-046, which is Councilwoman Feliciano, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, and Councilwoman, wait, Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you, Council President. So with regards to this resolution, can we, it falls under City Clerk's office, so Mr. Garcia, did you move this forward?
I'm sorry, this is 46.
25-046?
I did not initiate this resolution.
The ad hoc, can, do you?
We want to, she wants to know who authored the actual ordinance for this. That is, that would be me.
The, go ahead.
Can we have? Mr. Garcia, can we just make sure that we have our name on there?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, so then Councilwoman Edwards? So in reading the, in reading the resolution about appointing to ad hoc committees, you have one here to the Housing Economic Development, and then you have the Animal Welfare Ad-Hoc Committee. I don't know if we, one, I don't know if we need to spell them. I understand where you're coming from, I guess, then because right now we have the two, but we're not limited to just these two. So you would continually be writing more resolutions for any more ad hoc committees that we would have? So I would respectfully suggest that if we were to move this forward, we would just establish the fact that, I mean, if we don't already have something that says that we can have ad hoc committees, and off the top of my head, I don't know off the top of my head, so Mr. Cologi, you can answer that. If we have it anywhere that says that we have, we can do this, if it's anywhere in A316 or something like that about ad hoc committees. If we don't have anything there, then we don't need to specify these two because again, we would just keep coming back because you're going to have other committees that are going to come. Second, the bottom part where it says that each committee shall be headed by a chairperson selected by the members of the committee, they'll schedule meetings, set agendas, facilitate discussions, prepare reports every 90 days to the full council or more frequently as deemed necessary. Specifically for Housing and Economic Development and the Animal Welfare Boards, I don't think 90 days is sufficient, considering everything that's been going on. I mean, we just, we just met with the, with the HED Subcommittee and notes still have to be distributed even about that because these will be things that we will have to take into consideration and that we will have to vote on. So I think that with that, minutes should be, should be given after each meeting that these committees would have because 90 days is just far too long, especially given the concerns with the housing, with the HED and the movement of everything that's going on and the Animal Welfare Committee. Lastly, with the part, the last, the second to last, it is further resolved. It says that the following members of the council be appointed, you know, by the Council President. I don't know if names of councilpeople were supposed to be submitted in those parts. But again, I don't think that we need to list the Housing and Economic Development and Animal Welfare. I think it just should be overall that we can establish ad hoc committees and then as such, they'll, they'll do an examination of whatever specific issues related to that committee, right? X out the Housing and Economics and then the other Animal Welfare, that the minutes and stuff are done after each meeting or with, you know, within, within seven days of the meeting and distributed to council. And then that, and then that be that. Okay, Madam President?
Council Vice President? Thank you. So thank you for all of your questions and suggestions. I just wanted to point out a couple of things, the obvious, that this is a resolution rather than an ordinance because according to Mr. Cologi and according to the Faulkner Act, we could not establish an ordinance with subcommittees with the language because of that. So this is by way of resolution, just to establish that we will have, or do have ad hoc committees and to define what they are and our roles and responsibilities. Right now, we have Housing and Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee that you and myself and Councilwoman Williams are on. Resolutions are typically a year. They're not permanently, I'm just saying in public reference, so they're a year, so they're not permanent. So with that being said, I wasn't sure whether we should include the names and then also the Animal Welfare one does not exist currently. It was just that public concern and that there's so much around that, to your point, what you said earlier, is a lot going on. So I felt like just throwing that out there to see if council would be interested in forming one so that we can assist the administration with any type of things that we need to assist on. So I do agree with, it does need to be every 30 days instead of 90. And I do agree that, you know, a report should be due or submitted to the rest of council every, within seven business days after the meeting so that we are all on one accord. And we did have a meeting last week in that we do have to provide notes for. So we can amend that on the days now to reduce the 90 days down to 30 days and then include the language to report within seven business days. And you said there was something else on the last page. Should names be added to the, that's, I mean, if the entire council agrees that names be included, I don't mind that at all.
Council, Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. So to this, you, you actually have it, it says here, the following members of council will be hereby are appointed by the Council President to the committee. So names would have to be there.
Yes.
Secondly, you, you named this al, this Animal Welfare Ad-Hoc Committee that doesn't exist. I don't even think that should be on there. I mean, the mayor just put something out about having his animal advisory board. So I think the advisory board needs to be the advisory board and if we have a liaison to that, then that's fine. I think that's going to take care of itself. And again, I just think that this, this should just be a resolution, whether it's, you know, a year or not, that just covers ad hoc committees, period. Right? Because we didn't even vote to say that we even wanted to have an Animal Welfare Ad-Hoc Committee and then we're adding this here. We, I don't think we should do that. And I think that I understand that the, the road that you're trying to go down with this, I think it just should be guidance for ad hoc committees, period. And then that, and then that frees up, so then as they come, then they come, right? And then we just understand, it's SOP for us that we just understand that. But I don't, I don't think we should have something on here that's just put out there, one that we haven't even said we wanted to establish it. And again, the mayor is doing what he's doing, let, let his board be the board.
I agree with that and this, so you know, was drafted prior to the Animal Welfare Advisory Board being put out for membership. So this is something that was in the works for a few months and it got to this point. So it was left in there just to have a conversation with the rest of council to see how you all feel. It can definitely be stricken out. It looks like Mr. Cologi has something to say.
Council President?
Mr. Cologi?
Not to overcomplicate this, but under the Faulkner Act, under which we're governed, unlike most of the other forms of government in New Jersey, we are not allowed to have standing committees. Only the council, the council can only designate itself as a committee of the whole. I think in the research that I sent to the Council Vice President, I showed in a number of other forms of government, the borough forum, the city forum, et cetera. It expressly says council shall organize itself into committees for the ensuing year. We don't have that. So all we could do is A, designate ourselves as a committee of the whole, which the first paragraph does here, and B, indicate that we are going to establish ad hoc committees basically as needed. Now, ad hoc means it's not a, it's not supposed to be there forever. You have a particular issue that's pending, we appoint an ad hoc committee to address that issue. On the second page, there is no individual council members listed there because I guess this was the draft, this is how the draft went in. It was anticipated by me that somebody was going to either, you know, fill in names there or suggest names. So there really should be names on the second page. This isn't just to create the committee. This was to also create the ad hoc committees with the names of the people there. So I apologize for any confusion.
Okay, so Council President?
I was going to suggest to table it for right now.
Right.
We're gonna, I want a motion if we can table this, just so that we can iron out some of the details and then if we want to establish an ad hoc, then we can definitely try to figure out who would be on that committee?
Yes.
Yeah, Council President? Oh, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'd like to ask one question, so Mr. Cologi here?
Yes.
Mr. Cologi, can you, can you explain the Terminology Committee of the Whole for us, please?
The Committee of the Whole?
Yes, sir.
You know, it's kind of an archaic term. It's been around for 100 years. There is only one council and for reasons that go back to 1950, when the Faulkner Act was created, which is seven years, yeah, seven years beyond how old I am, so about 75 years ago, they're still using those kinds of, you know, phrases, Committee of the Whole. You know, they wrote, they wrote the statute that way. I mean, the council is the body, but it also designates itself as the only committee that can exist with the power to create only ad hoc committees. Now, why it was done like that, I don't know. When you read different legislation, you shake your head and say, you know, who wrote this and why? But I don't even think you would need that part in there. I think you could say council could, you know, designate ad hoc committees as needed and as necessary to address a particular topical issue. I wasn't there when they wrote that, Wes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yeah, I know we're, we're moving to possibly table this. But I mean, I just, yeah, I did have questions on this, so and I guess my concern was like an ad hoc committee. I mean, we'd have to have something established first to initiate an ad hoc committee to say that, okay, something's not working and we need to have this committee formed. And without even forming the Animal Advisory Board yet, that's still being in process, it's kind of like Advisory Board yet, that's still being in process, is kind of like putting the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse, rather. So, I mean, that was pretty much my question in this and why we're, while we're doing that. I know there are issues with the, the animal shelter and animal issues in the city, but I think that we should definitely let the advisory board that the mayor is working on get formulated first. I know he's doing interviews because, I mean, even with that, there's questions about what the criteria for that committee looks like, what the expectations coming out of that and then, you know, see what they might propose once they've come together. And then we can start thinking about isolated issues and having this ad hoc committee to hone in or help whatever is needed. So, I mean, with that, I think that there's a lot of things that need to be worked out and I think that this is kind of a, a little too early to be pushing this at this point in time. So I would definitely be favorable of tabling this until we have more answers.
Thank you, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg. May I have a motion to table?
Wait, Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, just one last, just one last attempt to try to not, I mean, if we don't have, if we're gonna table it, we're gonna table it, but I just, for, based on what I, what I said and based on what Mr. Cologi just said, I think that if we get, if we get rid of, if we eliminate the two committee names out of the now therefore be it resolved, right? Okay. So if we got rid of Housing and Economic Development Ad-Hoc and Animal Welfare Ad-Hoc Committee, if we left the first, it is further resolved, that's fine. If we eliminate the second and the third, it is further resolved. If we go down to the fourth further resolved and say that they will schedule the agendas and all that good stuff, I don't know if they need to necessarily prepare a report if they're giving minutes to the council within seven days following a meeting. So if, if we amended that part to say, facilitate discussions at the meetings and prepare minutes and notes to be distributed to council within seven days following each meeting. And then on the last page, if we get rid of the second, it is further resolved, I think we are accomplishing what Council Vice President Edwards is looking to do. If, if that's, I mean, if y'all willing to entertain it, if not, we table it, but that's just my suggestion.
Council President?
I like that idea, but my only question would be to Mr. Cologi because he did say that we should have names included. So should we establish who would want to be on these subcommittees or should we know what the subcommittees would be first? I'm sorry, Mr. Kay.
So sorry. Who asked that question?
That would be a separate sub, that would be a separate resolution, though, establishing the names on that.
So that means we want to come before everyone, again, each time we want to do a subcommittee.
You could do a resolution at every meeting, creating a new ad hoc committee. And then presumably, when you're done with the ad hoc committee, would pass a resolution that would, you know, dissolve or eliminate the ad hoc committee. But, you know, to get started, you would create the ad hoc committee.
Right, we would need the names, is what you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, got to put names in there.
Council President?
I'm curious, right?
Council President, to my colleagues, Figueroa Kattonberg's point earlier and having, particularly for Animal Welfare, having a committee set up before the Animal Welfare Advisory Board gets set up, I, I think that is not something we should do. We should have let that start its course at least minimally, but also, as much, many great suggestions have been made to this, I think right now we have a Frankenstein resolution. We might want to table that for the moment, bring it back at our next public meeting so we could see it clearly and digest it. So I know a lot of work has gone into this.
Right, and that, that's why we don't want to shut it down just yet, but I also agree though, but just to her point, she did draft this prior to the Animal Welfare Advisory Board. But Councilwoman Frisbee, I think you had something also.
I just wanted to add with both, Councilwoman Feliciano said the, the last part, but striking it as further resolved, that the following members of council be hereby appointed, or if and if we left that in there, that we took out, that the following members, and just say that we're waiting that the council president will appoint these, not that the names are listed here at this time, to give you opportunity to speak with the members of council, to see who actually is interested in being on these committees. That was the first one. And then I understand the Housing and Economic portion at least where it's talking about, we're going to change these up year to year and it may not make sense to some, but to me it does. And I say that only because depending on where the issue may be in the city, it may be various, if it is in the north, it's in the south, that representative will want to be on that committee at that time to represent as opposed to someone that is there this year, that, and, and it's continuous. So I do agree with that, that we should have an opportunity for the change up so that we can govern ourselves that, that way to be over our areas of our wards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman, Council Vice President?
Thank you. I do agree with removing the Animal Welfare Ad-Hoc Committee, just in the light of the administration moving forward with the Animal Welfare Advisory Board. I do think that we do have an opportunity here to, as we are discussing this collectively, this was discussed at the previous meeting as well, and respectfully, council has had this for a few days and I, I would have expected everyone to have an understanding by now on what this is. So this is just, you know, open for discussion, this is establishing roles and responsibilities for an ad hoc committee that other council members have also agreed that we needed to do. So I'm hopeful that we can find a resolution tonight without tabling this, but if we need to table it, then so be it. But I would like to motion to amend it on the days right now, before there's a motion to table it. So I want to motion to amend the fourth, it is further resolved that each committee shall be headed by a chairperson selected by the members of the committee who shall schedule meetings, set agendas, facilitate discussions and meetings and prepare reports every thirty days to the full council. No, no, it was, scheduled reports within seven business days of each meeting to the full council. So if we can include that and strike out the ninety days altogether and have prepared reports or meeting minutes to the full council within seven business days after the meeting or more frequently as deemed necessary. So, because it's not established, we don't have meetings established, we have been encouraging the administration to meet with the Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee on a monthly basis, but we're not there yet. So that's why you don't see that included in the language of whether, or how frequently these meetings will be. So I think that preparing reports or the meeting minutes, providing meeting minutes to the full council within seven business days after a meeting.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you.
Were she done, are you done with the amendment? With that, that was all you?
That's one amendment, but I have others.
I wanted to hear the rest of the amendments real quick.
I just wanted to get through, get through that section before we move on to the other.
Finish her amendments real quick and then.
So, so amending it in that last sentence, after who shall schedule meetings, set agendas, facilitate discussions and meetings and prepare written reports within seven days after a meeting to the full council.
Okay.
So that's, that's my motion.
Oh, but that's, that's the only amendment? You didn't include, you just said?
Yeah, we can go through others, well, removing Animal Welfare Ad-Hoc Committee from all sections.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can, can I just say something real quick, Council Vice President? So my, and I'm sorry to belabor this, my understanding of this, the way, the way I'm looking at this, is that first, we're looking to establish the fact that the council can have ad hoc committees. That is step one, step one. Yes, we did have this for a couple of days. I sent a request asking where did this even come from? I had questions, so I didn't even know who to ask because I didn't find out till tonight, until you had prepared this. Secondly, once we establish the fact that there are ad hoc committees, which this could do, then there could be the next one to say, appointed to the Housing and Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee, which will do the housing policies, economic development, blah, 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 blah. It'll be council persons, dot, 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 dot. That, that's how I was looking at it. So that's why I kept taking it to say that this would be the thing that would establish that council would, would, would have the ad hoc committees, period. And then when you establish who would be sitting on those, now we could bring it back and say, okay, now we have the Housing Economic Ad-Hoc Committee and these are the council people on it. And then we have the animal or whoever, and then we have whatever else comes forward and then we establish it that way. So, so this would be the framework to say we're having it and every ad hoc committee would have to submit these reports or minutes within seven days and it would be a body in and of itself and all that good stuff like that, and then we take it to the next level. That, that's why I was looking at it that way. So it's not to diminish what you're bringing forward or to take away from it, it's just to refine it, to say, yes, we're establishing this, period, and then we could put in, a, as we go, who, who the people are.
I mean, I don't mind doing that that way.
To that point, that pretty much everything would stay the same except for we would remove this last, no, not this last one, the second to last one where we have the names of the members, because we don't have that, so can we just remove that? And then with the amendments that were made as far as the fourth further resolved with the seven days, reporting within seven days to the full council.
And then you would also take out the, it is further resolved, the Housing and Economic Development and it is further resolved, the Animal Welfare.
All of these would be restricted.
That would be taken out and then you would take out the names of the two under the first resolve because again, this is just a shell setting up saying we're going to have ad hoc committees. And then you'll come back with another one that says, now, here is the people on the HED and then break it on down and then, and then put your format and everything and then we go.
We can do it that way.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. I didn't bring this up earlier because I thought we'd, I probably would be tabling or be bringing this back, but also in the last paragraph where it says, it is further resolved that the following members of council be hereby, hereby are appointed by the council president.
That's what we said, we're going to remove that.
Pardon me?
We're going to remove that.
The entire paragraph?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
That way, like she said, it would be a, just establishing that we're going to have an ad hoc committee or committees. And then when we establish them, after discussion has been made, we decide who's going to be on what. We will come forth with a different resolution stating, these are the members of HED, whatever other committees we decide to establish.
Thank you, because it's one thing for us to sit up here with a copy of the motion, but for members of the public who don't have that.
We, we do have understanding of this, this resolution for sure.
Right. I don't, Council President, again, I don't want to squash it. If we could, if we could get there, I just, I just needed you to understand where I was coming from with this, let's do the shell. And then when you come back with the other ones, then cool, then we can do it.
Agreed. So Madam President, do you want me to start the amendment?
Motion, please.
So I motion to remove now, the paragraph, now, it is therefore resolved, I motioned, yes, that, that's a part of that whole thing. So that whole entire section that includes the ad hoc committee stating specifically what they are and as well as the amendment that I had said before to prepare reports within seven business days after a meeting. And lastly, to remove the second to last, it is further resolved that, that the following members of council be, be on these ad hoc committees and remove the committees.
Maybe have a motion to amend Resolution twenty-five zero forty-six with those amendments?
Madam President, I believe that was the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And who's the second? Frisbee's the second, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, Council President?
Yes.
Just to be clear one more time, can you just say again what's, what's being taken out, Council Vice President?
The paragraph, now it is therefore resolved.
Okay.
The first one that establishes the committees.
Right.
And it is further resolved, the second to last, on the second page, to remove the one that appoints the council members to the ad hoc committees.
And, and, and the?
And the second and third, it is further resolved.
On the first page, that shows that.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Both of those, anything related to those committees.
Right.
So removing the second.
Amending the, the ninety to seven days.
Minutes shall be prepared within seven days of the meeting and distributed to council.
Yes, seven.
Following the meeting. Okay. Thank you, Council Vice President and Council President.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, I think we're ready for a vote now.
I'm just trying to make sure that I understand that amendment.
Do we need another, like, do I need to explain it again? Because we, we motioned a seconded, but it was, it didn't include those other two paragraphs.
Well, this was, yes. You know what, I will go ahead and take another motion and second for this amendment.
Okay, so, Madam President?
Yes, Vice President?
I motion to remove the paragraphs as following, now it is therefore resolved.
Okay.
The second, it is further resolved that the Housing and Economic Development.
Okay.
The third, it is further resolved that the Animal Welfare Committee.
Okay.
The fourth, it is further, no, no, I'm sorry, not remove that, amended to change it from every ninety days to within seven business days after a meeting.
Got it.
And to remove the second to last, it is further resolved that the following members of council.
There we go. Thank you.
Understood. Is there a second?
Council President?
Is there a second?
Just wanted to confirm.
No, is there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, second, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to confirm that both these paragraphs are, are eliminated, correct?
No, just, just the, that second to last one.
The first one stays.
So the one that says are appointed by the council president?
Yes.
So that one's eliminated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I heard second to last and that's like first to last, so, thank you.
Roll call.
Oh, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, sorry, you're going to look over there.
No, I'm sorry, that was up from before.
Okay, thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
We may proceed, please.
Certainly, roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried as amended.
Geez, I forgot where we were now.
Moving on.
Consent agenda.
That can go on consent.
Yes.
With the amendments.
Yes.
Thank you. Let me just write this real quick. The next one, I believe, if we're continuing the same order, was twenty-five zero seventy-three with Councilwoman Kattonberg, Figueroa Kattonberg?
And Williams.
And Williams.
Oh, four eight, right?
Hmm, I'm on O seventy-three, I'm trying to stay in the same order.
Oh, O seven three was not one of mine.
Was that you, Miss, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
So I just had a few questions on this one, it has the resolution support for the Immigration Trust Act. I just had some questions for sponsor, Councilwoman Feliciano, as well as Police Director Wilson, if should he be able to come up. Because there is some different information on the internet, some misinformation, potentially some deliberate, and I just wanted to make sure that we're clear as well as the public on the intent of the Immigration Trust Act and what it will do legally. So I guess if it's okay, Councilwoman Feliciano, I'll ask Mr., our Director Wilson first.
If it is the Council President's pleasure?
Thank you. So Director Wilson, the Immigration Trust Act is, you probably are aware already, it is something that has been enacted in New Jersey and in California. So I wanted to find out legally, how would the Immigration Trust Act, if we were to support this resolution tonight, not impact or impact your operations for the Trent Police Department when it comes to the issue of immigration?
Steve Wilson, Police Director. I think that the council's support of it won't affect our operations at all. It comes from our New Jersey Attorney General's Office and we are guided accordingly and we cannot deviate from that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to verify that for the public because that's my understanding also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a last question. I just was curious if my colleague- Uh, I just was curious if my colleague, just take a moment to explain why this is needed. I do support it, but I thought it might be, uh, good for the public to hear also why this is important, if she would not mind.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Given the current climate of what we have going on, um, in the world around us and here, in the city of Trenton, um, and with the, um, the increased number, well, with the number of the immigrant population that is here in the city, um, I do feel that it is good and right that the council would support the Immigration Trust Act. While we do understand that, um, on the federal level, certain actions will be taken, I also understand that here, within the city and, and abroad, while we will not stand in the way of the, of the law, doing what it had to do on a federal level, we just wanna support the fact that we want things to be done the right way decently, and we want our police department to do what it is that they are commissioned to do, but to let everyone know that we stand in support of people being treated as human beings, um, during this process. And so that's why I drafted this in and bringing it forward for the council to consider supporting this act.
All right, thank you for doing so, ma'am. Thank you, that's all my questions.
Council President.
Um, Councilwoman Frisbee. Um, would it be too much to ask to have this read aloud, so that the public knows what we are actually reading, um, we are agreeing, being in agreement with?
No, I wouldn't mind that. Councilwoman Feliciano, would you like to read it?
I can't.
I can't find mine either.
I can't find mine. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, wait, you read it.
Thank you.
I have it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee, and thank you, Council President Gonzalez. A resolution expressing support for the Immigration Trust Act S3672 slash A4987, and affirming the city of Trenton's commitment to protecting the rights and dignity of immigrants. Whereas the city of Trenton is a diverse and inclusive community, valuing the rights and the contributions of all residents regardless of their immigration status. And whereas the Immigration Truck, Trust Act S3672 slash A4987 is based on the Immigration Trust Directive, which was issued in two, twenty eighteen by the former New Jersey Attorney General, to build trust between law enforcement and immigrant communities by limiting local government participation and federal immigration enforcement, ensuring that all residents feel safe seeking assistance from law enforcement and public services without fear of deportation. And whereas policies that foster trust and cooperation between immigrant communities and local law enforcement enhance public safety and promote stronger community relationships in homes, schools, and businesses. And whereas the Immigration Trust Act aligns with Trenton's commitment to protecting human rights, promoting equal treatment under the law, and upholding constitutional protections for all individuals. And whereas the Immigration Trust Act is a bill that would create new data privacy protections for people who interact with state and local agencies, and ensure that municipal resources are used effectively and do not contribute to fear and mistrust among immigrant populations. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Trenton, New Jersey, hereby expresses its support for the Immigration Trust Act, and urges the New Jersey Legislature to pass and enact this critical legislation. And be it further resolved that the city of Trenton affirms its commitment to policies that protects the rights, dignity, and well-being of immigrant communities, and opposes any measures that would undermine these protections. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be transmitted to the Governor of New Jersey, the New Jersey State Legislature, as well as other relevant stakeholders as a demonstration of the City Council's support for the Immigration Trust Act. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect pursuant to law.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you.
May this go on consent agenda. We okay with it? Consent, Mr. Garcia?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the next one, I believe, if I'm staying in order, I hope I didn't move it, but, um, 25 dash zero forty-eight.
Council President?
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg.
Thank you. Um, so whereas I am in support of this resolution, um, I know that I did have conversations about this process coming forward, so I'm excited that it is coming forward. But my questions are regarding the MOU, um, that has been provided to us. Um, one of the bullets on the second page of the MOU states that, um, we'll seek additional funding on behalf of the city for intersection improvements and upgrades within the project's length. Um, so I'm curious with, with regards to that, uh, are we talking about, um, you know, what is state responsibility at that intersection of 129 and Cass Street? Um, and also some of the problematic, um, traffic issues at the intersection of Third Street and, um, Cass Street as well? If we have anything, i- if the, the county is proposing anything for those intersections in terms of traffic? Um, and also, um, if there's anything proposed for that parking lot across the street from the McDonald's, I believe that that is county property as well? Um, and the parking meters that are to be removed by the county, um, will they be replaced, what will go in their place? Um, and what is the plan for some of the parking lots, um, that the county does own that may or may not, um, be generated to the city or go to the city?
Council President?
Yes. My, um, good evening.
The purpose of the MOU is basically to provide access to the county to do, um, the renovation of the road. But given the, uh, questions that you have, and, uh, since we have the presence of, uh, the county executive uh, here in the meeting, Mr. Dan Benson, uh, I would like to ask Council President for your permission to allow him to speak.
Absolutely, thank you, um, County Executive for being here to answer these questions.
No, no, happy to, and, and Councilwoman, thank you for the support of the MOU. Um, the intersections that you mentioned on Cass Street are not included in, in this. This is only for the intersections of South Broad. So yes, that, and, and that portion of South Broad is owned by the city, even though 206 runs through that. Uh, the city owns all of those intersections along South Broad. So as we see DOT dollars or Delaware Valley, uh, uh, Planning Resource Council, the DVRPC, we have opportunities at the county level to seek funding, to do design work for any upgrades to those intersections. That would be South Broad and Cass, that would be Dy Road and South Broad, that would be Hamilton Avenue and South Broad, Center Street, uh, and South Broad. And I know I'm missing like one or two others, Bridge Street and South Broad. Um, those are the intersections that we're talking about. Most of them actually just need upgrades in some of the lights and signaling. Because of where that is, that does require DOT's approval. So this allows us to seek those changes, um, uh, for that. Now, the last question you had was on some of the parking lots that the county owns. Uh, that's not a part of this MOU, although we are always open. Um, as we go through the process for this, there is, will be questions in terms of upgrades that the mayor and the council may want to make to parking regulations. I've heard council members talk about that a number of times. That is entirely up to the city, you would have to update your ordinances to do that. Um, and that doesn't affect what we're doing. Um, with regard to parking, the idea is to remove any of the meters that are just from Cass to Dy Street, and that will free up sidewalk real estate, that is the most narrow portion of South Broad, and then sidewalk spaces at a, as a, at a premium there. Ideally, and again, it's up to this council and the mayor through their ordinance. Those would be replaced with the kiosks, similar to what you see at Jerry's Parking, uh, uh, since there already is that. That obviously requires, uh, uh, it's the only part of this that would require the city to, uh, find some money to do that. Um, and again, the county's here to discuss that. We're just agreeing to take out those, you know, there's a lot of stubs in those areas as well. So we're removing that, we would not replace it with coin-operated meters. Uh, we would leave that up to the city to decide what they'd like to replace it with. Again, our recommendation is the kiosk, since that's already available in, in the parking lot next to Jerry's.
Okay, um, Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
County Executive Benson, thank you so much for that. So I, I'm actually appreciative of that, um, I have to apologize too, because I know that that is, what you just discussed is exactly what we discussed when we took that walk through the neighborhood. And I, for a second, was taking it as South Broad Street at Cass down to Center Street, because it, it goes down that way as well, instead of going just, uh, horizontal. It also goes, you know, longitude and latitude. So I was coming down, going past the prison and, and going down to Center Street that way, and that's where I was thinking, so.
Yeah, if this goes well, obviously Cass Street is an area that the county is interested in working with the city on, but Broad Street, there's a lot of Broad Street still to do from Cass to the college. So again, the idea here is do Cass the center, um, can, can the county's resources do, do that. Hopefully that results in something that both the city and the county, um, agreed was a good job, and then we can move to looking at other intersections and improvements along South Broad, all the way down hopefully to the college. And that was the original vision, uh, of the 2017 study that the MCIA had done, uh, that we're trying to kind of put into, uh, action.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you again for that clarity, that makes more sense. That is exactly what we discussed, I just, like I said, I took it as coming down Cass Street to Center Street. Um, so, but yes, thank you again, um, and thank you for setting this into motion and following through. This is much needed, um, for that area, and the city can use the help, so thank you so much.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you, Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Williams, and then Councilwoman Edwards, or Council Vice President Edwards.
So thank you for, uh, joining us, County Executive. I don't, I'll resist the urge to ask that the North Ward portion of this be done first, since it's the smallest part. But, uh, thank you, uh, as my colleague stated, this is so sorely needed. And I was curious, I know I've spoken to you in the past regarding the South Broad Street, uh, portion, uh, that's basically a bridge, uh, for a walkway that goes over Route One and, uh, Amtrak rail lines, and it's been in poor shape, and some lights are missing, as I know you know. Uh, but since so many people actually walk to Cure Arena and do walk that direction to go to the supermarket, et cetera, would, uh, county be able to also potentially put safety bollards, maybe iron ones, uh, on the sidewalk to protect pedestrians from cars jumping the curb? And also protect the investment in the streetlights?
Yes, so, uh, I don't know about safety bollards, uh, on the bridge itself. The idea is, once this MOU is done, the county will pass this hopefully on the 25th, in addition to a street state company, Streetscape Company, that will look at all this. As part of that, that bridge, as you know, the Mill Hill neighborhood was very involved in the really high-level concept design. Our hope is to engage that neighborhood again. The original plan was to have a series of gates, or gateways, over the bridge, so it's a faceting of the bridge. The structure actually looks to be quite sound, it's just ugly. Uh, and so the idea is to figure out the intersection of Center, uh, Street and Broad, engage the community on, uh, that bridge. And then similarly, using the Streetscape Design Company, get feedback from the businesses and the residences on the Cass to Dy Street piece. And the whole idea is to have a sports, entertainment, governmental district that has good wayfind, so that residents that are coming from the Mill Hill neighborhood to that district feel like they're coming into a new neighborhood, a new area, that is ripe for some of the redevelopment that you've heard with, uh, the Roeland complex.
Okay, and then my other question, sir, uh, the portion that has Furman next to the Roadrunner gas station, uh, the sidewalk area there is also in bad shape, and I believe that might come under your jurisdiction.
So the good news there is, um, what we're doing here is really for the South Broad Street portion. We have designated the work, the design work that we've asked, uh, the Streetscape Company to do, um, and again, that'll be on the county's agenda on the 25th, is to come and actually do South Broad Street, but the side streets up to the alleys on both sides. And this way, all the ADA requirements are done, trees are planted, lighting is done, the whole shebang should be there, along with upgrading. Uh, there will be decisions for obviously the city to make, such as bike lanes and how you'd like to do that, parking restrictions, all of that is, we leave, uh, to the city to, to let us know what their preferences are. But for us, it's that making that look good, and making sure trash receptacles, all of that is included. Um, and we've gone a little bit further and asked that company also to help us with our parking lots to see if there are dual uses to not just parking, but how do we greenscape our parking lots? How do we make sure if we want to be able to have events in the county parking lot, which is quite large? Give us some suggestions there, and I think that adds a lot to both, uh, the two wards that are there. And I will remind you that the reason why we picked Cass is because that's where the South Ward Neighborhood Center is. The county had provided, uh, ARP funding to the city to get that back open, and I know that's progressing. And so that, we're excited to, that there's a number of projects all happening along that stretch, including the Broad Street Bridge, the Van Skiver Building, and even some of the work, uh, hopefully that'll progress around Kingsbury too, even connects up to that.
That's exciting, thank you very much.
Council Vice President and Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Frisbee after.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, good evening, County Executive, it's so great to have you here. I just wanna say, um, thank you so much for your investment in the capital city. Um, no shade to your predecessors, but I have not seen this much investment on the county level in the capital city in my lifetime, um, since probably the arena in the ballpark was built. So I very much appreciate you and the attention that you have been giving us. Um, I don't have any questions, but more so of a suggestion or a request for consideration, humbly. The parking lot on Cass Street that Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg mentioned, um, is very underutilized. The portion on the Cass Street side, I mean, I know we use that or for, uh, parking for the employees, but the part that is underutilized, I look at it as an opportunity for commercial vehicles to be able to park there. Um, we have, like, needless to say, parking issues in the city with the commercial vehicles, they don't really have a place to park. The city does not have a, a lot of parking solutions either, um, due to the real estate largely being owned by the state. Um, so I would like for you to consider that opportunity, and that's another stream of revenue that the county could tap into as well, to open up that parking lot for commercial vehicle parking, that people would be able to park there overnight or whatever time they need to, and then swap out their personal vehicles as they need to, to get back and forth, um, and to keep their vehicles out of the residential neighborhoods overnight, um, because it's causing a lot of.
Yeah, that part of the parking lot is owned, uh, and managed by the Mercer County Improvement Authority. Um, we use it for overflow when there's a number of events, sometimes for the ballpark, but also we do our summer camps that go to the ballpark and other events. Um, and we do have commercial vehicles parking there. Um, we, we kind of turn a blind eye to it, as long as we don't see any issues, and they don't take any, there are signs that say you don't take any responsibility to park there. Um, I will tell you, it's not technically a parking lot, though. It is actually a redevelopment site. Um, and again, it's another one of those properties that the county owns, and really nothing has been done with it. Right now, our goal is to, as part of getting the Broad Street area, uh, looking nicer, is to now generate interest in these parcels for hopefully economic growth. Um, I don't think we're quite there yet, um, but I think we're getting there. We're seeing a lot of interest in the city of Trenton in general. And so our hope is by doing more of these, uh, investments, those will actually get developed. Um, so in the meantime, yeah, we're happy to talk about potential uses. That's part of what this, uh, company that we're engaging, uh, is to look at our parking lot there. Um, we think it can be a dual parking slash event space, um, that we can use throughout the years. Uh, I mean, throughout the year, depending on the season. Um, and we're looking to figure out how to use some of our other key space, like the, um, uh, some of our parks that are in the city, so that there are things more than just being passive, that there's entertainment happening. Um, so that's what we're looking to do. We, we don't wanna see any space as just one thing. Uh, the idea here is how do we make spaces able to be multiple things? During the day, it might be parking for the county, it may be one-off parking, uh, here and there for things, but on certain dates, we think that large of a space can be used until such time that we can attract, uh, developers in, uh, for the, that use again.
I definitely think that everyone would love to see the carnivals come back, so that's not bad.
There's, there's a lot of opportunities in that space.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So, thank you, County Executive for being here this evening, and thank you for your persistence in making sure that you are partnering with us in various, um, ways. My only, um, uh, comment is, oh, I have a question and I have a comment. One, the resurfacing sidewalks, the repairs, I'm always gonna comment on the fact that I appreciate you always keeping those with, um, keeping ADA, um, in the forefront and not in, uh, in afterthought. So thank you for that. With that said, um, I would like to know if, I know they're, uh, I assume, I should say, that they crosswalks will have those delays, um, will have the buttons so that you can, pedestrians can cross. Um, thus, there were ways. With that, can we make sure that some of them have, um, they have a, uh, a button, but it's timed with the cars still? If there is a delay where the pedestrians have a period, period of time, but they alone are moving and there are no, there's no movement of vehicles, that would be greatly appreciated, especially, um, and that helps those who are differently abled as well, crossing that, um, roadway.
Yeah, where if you have an all pedestrian crossing, um, and there's only two, Yeah, where if you have an all pedestrian crossing, and there's only two that I'm aware of in the county, maybe three now. And the very first one was in Princeton. I was the chair of the Transportation Committee. I was one that advocated for the DOT to change their position, which was very much against those. They did pilot that, and it was successful, and now there's two or three now in the county, and there are other places where you have an all pedestrian. No matter where they are, they generally still need to be approved by the state, because it is different than what some of the regulations are. However, it is seen because of some of their success in other places, that has now become more acceptable as a possibility. You have to show the pedestrian volumes, though. And so that's one of the reasons why some of the intersection improvements that we've spoken about in this MOU, we would seek to make sure that there are separate, trying to seek funding from different places so that we can do traffic studies of the intersections if we need to make those upgrades. That said, any changes that we make to upgrade lights or signaling would always have the most recent type of technology. So that would make it not only ADA accessible, but also for those that are hearing impaired and others. And those lights are generally set up so that you can always change the timing, so that it's an all pedestrian. So, anything that we do on a temporary basis to upgrade would not preclude changing to that in the future.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. You have something else to say?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, yeah. I was going to roll call it.
Okay, so Madam President, can I, since the county, since County Exec is here, can we please go to Resolution 25069? As well?
Sure.
You'll have to tell me which that one is.
Yeah, we can go.
Thank you.
25069, and I believe that is Councilwoman Williams and Feliciano.
Thank you.
So, just for the record, Mr. Garcia, we're going to roll call 25048.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
You can answer those for now.
But I can answer. I get further to the city.
Thank you.
So, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you.
25-069.
Thank you. And thank you, BA Richardson. I just, since he was here, and I had a question about the Eagle Tavern and the shared services agreement, so I figured we'd get it all out the way. So, the question that I have here is that we're looking for funding, we have these projects, it's going to be shared services with the county. So, just out of curiosity, what exactly does that mean when it comes to funding or monies, you know, once the Eagle Tavern is finished? And that's where I'm focusing my look at, I mean, they're both important, but I'm just curious. What does that look like as far as what we're going to do with the structure? If we put a business in there, if they're renting out the area, who gets a part of the proceeds? Like, what does it look like as far as the county's part in this?
I will give you, I'm sorry, Council President?
Yes, County.
I will give you probably a little bit of history on this collaboration, because it will make more sense to go that way.
Thank you.
Probably about three years ago, we had been talking for a while, more than three years ago, about what is the future of the Eagle Tavern, right? So, the Eagle Tavern is a landmark, it's one of our historic assets. And at that time, we were considering applying for historic preservation grants. However, those grants are limited, and our municipality or any other municipality is only able to apply for one or two grants a year. And given the increasingly bad situation of the Eagle Tavern, we thought that we needed to look for partners to apply for different grants. And at that point, we contacted MCIA to see if they would be one of our partners, either applying to historic preservation or to other entities. So, last year, there was an opportunity to apply for EDA grants. And we applied for the hotel, four million dollars for the hotel, plus seven million dollars for the Eagle Tavern and the Wireworks building. EDA understood that the city probably didn't have the manpower to manage those two large grants at the same time, and suggested that we continue to partner with MCIA for that purpose. So, basically, MCIA would be responsible for managing the renovation project for the Eagle Tavern. And then from the, and that would be the shared service agreement is basically for them to handle the project management portion. At certain point, we will have to reconvene, and that most likely will be with the HED Subcommittee. As of what route, we want to take once the Tavern is renovated. I don't know if that answered your question.
Okay, so then once we decide what route, and the council agrees on the direction that we want to go with it, if we decide that we want to turn it into a restaurant, or if we wanted to turn it into something, I was hopefully, wishfully thinking about something with the veterans, and maybe a VFW or something like that, to do services and the like. But anyway, if there was anything where they would come in and would rent the space or something like that, does the county get any part of any funds that would come in?
No, not really. And for a venue of that nature, this is what the city visited many years ago, and even as recent as three, four years ago, was to put RFPs out to get interest, right? The city, the city is not in the business of renting spaces, right? Or renting, running restaurants. But the city would consider, and again, this would be a call for the council. For example, once the Tavern is renovated, you put a RFP for somebody that wants to run a brewery or a restaurant, or, I don't know. Any creative idea that would be part of our redevelopment process that would attract customers and that would create a viable, a viable visitor's area in that part of our town. But the county would not receive any economic benefit from it. The county is basically helping us manage the funding that we will be receiving.
Thank you. I just wanted you to say that out loud. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Those are, that was my question, Council.
And I take the opportunity to thank the MCIA and the council, and the executive, the county executive for helping us with that.
Right, and thank you for that. So, into County Executive business. Thank you for the streetscape, try to say that five times fast, for working with us with that. For MCIA looking to partner with us with this, because Trenton is in need of help. And it is good to know that we do have a partner in the county. And thank you for being present here tonight, unasked, and, you know, we're always welcome, but unasked to come to talk to us if we had any questions. Thank you for that. Thank you, Council President.
Feliciano, BA Richardson, I believe we still have Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
Thank you very much. Just want to also, I can't wait for this to get started on the streetscaping and an Eagle Tavern. It is such a historical place, and I have a couple of questions about where it is right now, and also kind of get some information out there, what the potential is. Because one of the criticisms of doing anything with the building is that there's no parking nearby. If this ever comes to fruition, where are people actually going to be able to park their car, be able to patronize it? So can you kind of fill us in on, you know, what the amenities are for the property, once it would get up and running as a brewery, or whatever it might be?
We really don't know what the amenities of the property will be. At this point, we were basically working in a feasibility project that we needed to present to EDA in order to get this, this funding. However, yes, we recognize that there are, there is no parking, but that's why we have partners, right? We need to continue to work with our county executive, because they have a big parking across the street from there. And MCIA building is just across the street from, from the Tavern. We also have a city parking that is behind Trenton Social, that is actually city parking.
City lot.
Yes. And so, it's a lot of still different angles that we need to study. But at least the money, the money available will allow us to, to work on stabilizing the structure. And most likely, we will need to pursue other grant money, once we determine what the plan is.
Now, I'm glad to hear that there are some solutions with parking, because that's the main criticism I usually hear from folks. And then the other part about stabilizing the building, currently, there are a few issues with cleaning garbage and debris that's gathered with the winds in the winter on the side of the building, heading towards Sacred Heart Church. But also, there's a hole in the fence, the wooden fence next to the building, if that could be secured so vagrants or folks don't go behind the building, potentially, you know, who knows what happens. But we don't want also anybody falling down the hill over towards the railroad tracks. And then on the other side, on the Ferry Street side, I don't know if this has been fixed, I haven't seen it in a couple of days, but there is a drain pipe that has been leaking water, particularly when we have deluges. If that could be looked at to be fixed, to make sure that there's no water damage.
The department director responsible for that is here, so I'm pretty sure that he's taking notes. So, thank you for your.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
Yes, so they pretty much asked the questions that I wanted to ask for the most part. I wanted to know what the project was that was being proposed, so I understand. Thank you for all of your answers. And then I understand, so 3.5 million going specifically to renovations for the Eagle Tavern, plus our 20% match of 1.4, is that a 20, so 750,000 or 650,000, whichever that one goes to, do we have anything, BA Richardson, as to what the costs are to get this building up to code or up to par as it stands right now? What that looks like?
Well, Paul, you please, to the front. The last information that I recall dates probably two years ago, and it was a story that it was also, I think it was MCIA, actually, that the study, at that time, we were talking about a $4 million project. Two years later, I'm pretty sure that it's a lot more money, and that's what I mentioned before, that we would be probably looking for additional funding. But we will only know once we have a, once we have architectural studies and engineering studies and all that hard, all the hard part, right? For the renovation, we will not know until we actually procure the services how much money exactly it's going to cost. But we are sure that it's going to be more than what we have at hand right now.
Okay, so I mean, the study that was done a couple of years ago, we know that we were looking at about $4 million to rehab. Are we, are we maintaining a good bulk of the integrity of the historical value of the building? Do you know?
We have to.
Okay.
And that's going to, that also adds to the cost of the project. It's not the same to renovate a 1950 building than when we are talking about a 200 and some years old building that we need to basically maintain the historic value, the historic features of that property. But we have to.
Okay, and then final question is just because, because of the historical value of, I mean, I've lived around the corner from that building for 43 years. So, because of the historical value of that building, what it represents, when it comes to, I guess, a redeveloper or, you know, business entities coming in, like how is that going to be vetted? Are there going to be certain criteria for what type of business can come into that area? What, or, you know, how would be representative to attract tourism and things of that nature? Is that even on the table yet? Are we too, is it too early for those conversations?
It's probably, it's a little bit early for that conversation, but that conversation will be driven by the council and the HED Committee.
Okay, okay, all right.
And of course, because of the historic, historic asset, it would be my recommendation that we will be including Trenton Historic Society and other community partners into those discussions.
Okay, yeah, that's really important. Okay, thank you so much, BA. I appreciate you.
Thanks.
Thank you, BA Richardson. Mr. Garcia, can we move that to roll call, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. And I believe the next one, if I'm going in the correct order, is
Council President?
25050, which is Councilwoman Williams?
I had, I'm sorry, Council President, I had a question on 25072.
Oh, my apologies.
I'm sorry, I just, so, I'm sorry.
So, let's go to, I'm trying to keep it in order, so, Councilwoman Feliciano for 25072.
Thank you. It'll be quick. Thank you, Council President. The question I have on, the question I have on 25072 is, I think this is good that we would, that we would have the EEOC officer. Why are we doing this now, and how come we hadn't had this already?
Council President MA, we actually had a designated EEO officer, we've had several. They've transitioned from the city, and this is the replacement for that, the most recent one having transitioned probably about two and a half, three months ago. We're replacing that individual with this person.
Okay. And what is our status as far as looking into hiring a HR Director?
I don't know the answer to that. I will defer to our business administrator, distinguished Ms. Maria. I know her name.
We have not started the process, because we don't have an approved budget. So, once we get an approved budget, then we will be able to do that.
So, we're looking to add for an HR Director?
Yes.
Thank you, BA Richardson. Appreciate it. Thank you, Council President.
Can I go to consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
I know we were going in order, but I feel like we jumped out of order, because I had asked to discuss 25071, but I know Williams, Councilwoman Williams had a question, I don't know if hers was before, so.
Right, we didn't get to 71 yet. I'm going in order according to the docket, that's why.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
I know, it always confused me too with the numbers, but. So, next is, where was I, 25050, I believe that's Councilwoman Williams. But I just wanted to make a quick note, Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Or Director Wilson, on the second page, I think we're missing a C, like at the last paragraph, the covert cameras, just missing a C in front of covert cameras.
050.
On the last paragraph. That's all. But, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, ma'am. So, Police Director Wilson, my question regarding this grant, which is the Justice Assistant Grant. I know there'd be various items purchased, including vehicle-mounted automated license plate readers, some laptops, ten laptops that are special laptops for your officers and detectives, overt cameras that will be working with 4G service. And I was wondering, you know, overall, with that and body worn cameras, is any of this equipment redundant, or is it modernization? And also adding to your capacity to investigate crime even stronger and further than you have in the past?
It's to add to our crime fighting efforts. It's not redundant.
Each of the items that we purchase will be utilized in real time based on our task force officers' needs and the needs of the police department. The overt cameras will add to our already, our covert cameras that we have running across the city. And our body worn cameras, we need in addition because we'll be adding additional police officers here.
Okay. And can you explain overt camera for anybody who may not understand what that is?
Overt camera is the camera that anybody can see standing in the street. And a covert camera is one that you cannot.
Okay. So it's out in open or not hiding anything?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And is your being forward about why things are being purchased, particularly in this age?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I go to consent? Thank you. Consent agenda, Mr. Garcia?
Noted. Thank you.
All right. And then I believe the next one in order is 520, 25 dash 052. And that's Councilwoman Janet Figueroa Kattemberg.
Thank you. I just, I think just some clarity in reading through this resolution. We, the City of Trenton, out of the City of Trenton Police Budget is paying for prosecutors, detectives or officers for this task force rather than our own detectives or officers?
This, this is, the county reimburses, reimburses the City of Trenton for our detectives who are assigned to the homicide task force. This is a reimbursement for the overtime. So the city or the county pays the city for the overtime for the officers assigned to the task force, to the tune of 100.
And thank you for that, Director Wilson. And were the officers that were utilized from T P D for the task force, were they utilized only in, for occurrences in the City of Trenton or throughout Mercer County?
No, it's the Mercer County homicide task force. So they work within the county.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarity. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Can we move to consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. And I believe the next one is 25 dash 053. And that is Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Hello. First question, is the heat on in here?
Right, that part.
Did y'all turn it on?
It is on.
It's been cold ever since we walked in.
It feels like it's cold air blowing right now. No, seriously.
If we could have it moving forward, that the chambers be heated before we come in, it would be greatly appreciated. It's very cold.
Did you hear that?
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
He said it's on.
It's very cold. How many years have we used Mercadian?
Mercadian? I think that they have been used since 2016, probably not in 2017, but then 2018 up to now. But not under one contract, right? Not under one procurement instance. But the services are procured. At least in the last case was three years ago. It was a contract, a year contract with two options to extend for one year. So I think this is the last option of the last contract.
Okay. And when we go out to bid, like, they're the only ones that apply for this?
I really don't think so. For this last, yeah, you probably have more information than me, Colin.
Good evening, Colin Cherry. Madam Councilwoman, it's varied through the process. They are often the only ones that apply, but they are not always the only ones that apply. We try to take a look at all of the ones that come in and assess them appropriately. Mercadian does have a lot of municipal auditing experience in the state of New Jersey in particular. So that has certainly helped when there is competition.
Okay.
And their price is usually quite competitive.
I just ask because we've been with them for like a long time and just asking about audit rotation with servicing and stuff coming in. And I guess also, as we look at the audits, when we get them to review, if you all are following the findings and everything and then making the proper corrective actions, right? Because why would we continue to keep utilizing a service if we're not listening to what it is that they're telling us that we need to fix? So thank you for that. Thank you. Consent.
Thank you. I believe the next one is 25 dash 054. And I think that's Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg.
Sorry, ma'am. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg's laptop had an issue. It's just automatically restarted. She's waiting for that to come back in to the meeting.
We'll go to the next one.
Actually, I had questions. Yeah, on all those also.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much. So my question, and I don't know if this would be for Mr. Cherry potentially, regarding 25054, appropriations for interest and debt redemption charges?
What is it?
Oh, or Director Richardson. Sorry, I didn't see it out of my mind.
No worries.
I apologize for B A Richardson. So this is to retire debt or just make the payments over the next 12 months for bond anticipation notes all the way through L Y C D C bonds and interest, including water bonds, parking bonds, free acres, so forth. And then also a million, one or so for school bonds?
Yeah. Basically, in the local finance board requires that the first thing that we do is pay for our financial obligations. We need to pay for our, the interest on the bonds. We need to pay all of our debt, bond debt and any notes, interest. That's the first thing that we need to pay. And so that's basically why all of our debt services are listed there. And we are doing an appropriation to pay for that. That's the first thing that we need to do every year.
And will any of these bonds be retired at the end of 25?
No. There is one that it's really close to be retired, which is the hotel bonds at the end of the page. But no.
Gotcha. So L Y C D C.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And I could go on to 25055, ma'am, should you wish.
I think Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg is back on.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg, we are on Kattemberg. We are on 25 dash 052.
Oh, yes. One second.
54. 50, I'm sorry, 54.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we did. I didn't have anything for 54.
Okay. So that must have been Councilwoman Williams. So are you okay with that? Consent? All right. Thank you. Consent. We're ahead, please. Next one is 25 dash 055, also Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, ma'am. So my question is just so for the public, where it says under the title of resolution about emergency appropriations, whereas an emergency has arisen with respect to providing funds for the operation of the City of Trenton Grant Fund, can you, you know, fill us in on what the emergency situation is or highlight that?
It's really not that, you know, it's basically the standard language. It's not necessarily that there is an emergency. It's just that we need to appropriate the money in order to use it. Those are grant funding, and we need to include it as part of our budget in order to use those funds.
And like we saw earlier regarding the Roebling Machine Shop, like potentially one of this would be to match the required match for the grant.
That is correct. And this is actually grant, this is a state grant. All these appropriations here below are related to grants. It's just that even though it's grant money, it's funding that we are receiving from other agencies, we still need to appropriate it within our budget in order to use it for this year. But this is just one of, one of several grants that we have got received for Roebling Machine Shop.
Okay. Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Just real quick. And then on here, it says S N J U E Z Event 2024, 2025. Can you tell us what that event was?
That's not necessarily, that is any, well, this is a U E C expenditure that we are expecting. I don't know necessarily what the event is, but that could be any of those expenditures that we are expecting to have in the first quarter for U E C. But I could get you more information about that.
Okay. And then the U S D O J cops hiring?
Yeah, that, those are grants that we receive to offset some of our police officers' personnel matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Can I go to consent? Thank you. And moving right along, 25 dash 57.
56.
I don't have 56 listed, so my apologies if I missed it. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So this might be similar in nature. But regarding utility appropriations and emergency nature of that also, because one of the things, you know, knowing particularly with the P S E and G, we have to pay for streetlights, whether they're working or not.
That is correct. These are basically for the, for our utilities, water utility, sewer utility, parking utility. This is appropriating funding for those three utilities.
Okay. Thank you. Consent, please.
Thank you. And 25 dash 057, Councilwoman Feliciano.
I don't have a question.
You don't?
I changed my mind.
Okay. Anyone else for 25?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. So I wanted to ask this because this has recently come up. Obviously, we have the situation where there is, we'll call it disgruntlement amongst some of the suburban towns regarding our waterworks. And one of the things that I've learned as a council member is finding out that we are not able to bond as much as maybe other municipalities or as much as we need to, in my opinion, for the waterworks. And that our bond, bonding for the waterworks is counted against our municipal bonding. And am I incorrect in my understanding of that? Because, you know, that severely impacts how much the state can bond as a municipality to pay for roads, bridges and all the other stuff we have to take care of. But also limits our waterworks and bonding for all the repairs it needs to do, which we've now been told could be up to about $600 million, if not more.
I would really feel uncomfortable answering a bond question at that level. And if you would like, I can have our bond counsel to be here for the next meeting. We actually wanted to bring him for this meeting, but couldn't.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And so, yes.
Council President, if I may, make just a slight suggestion. Councilwoman Williams, if you want to articulate that in the email, we can have that sent to bond counsel. They could distribute an answer to the council body as a whole.
Yeah, I most likely have an answer, but I would not, I don't want to venture to.
No, I think, but I would appreciate, and I imagine others would, having the bond counsel come to the meeting to explain this because this is an incredibly, you know, important, far reaching issue for our city.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Council President.
Thanks.
Uh, consent agenda, please?
Yes. And now we are at, if I'm not mistaken. I may have missed them. 70, hold on one second. 60. 67, 25 dash 67. I believe that is Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg. But 62. I got 67. I did that, but I have either 62 or 67. I'm not sure which one I vote.
Madam President, were there any questions on 58? I'm sorry. Just asking.
No, I didn't have that written down. Not 59, not 60. It's either 62 or 67. No? Okay. So it may be 67 because I kind of have it like scrabbled out. Was that you, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg, 67?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams?
I'm sorry, 67, ma'am?
Yes. No?
No, that was not me.
All right. So then I have 69, we did, and I have 71.
Council President, I'm sorry, Council President, really quickly, before we move on, since how we're talking about the ones for waterworks, can I just ask a broad question?
Sure.
Thank you. I just, just note if Director Sample's there. I just, I just noticed that we have 11 resolutions before us regarding waterworks and sewer. And I'm just wondering, how many of these are a result of the D E P investigation?
Director Sample? I had 67 down.
Good evening, Council President and council members. Sean Sample, Director of Water and Sewer. None of these are related to the D E Ps. This is regular regulatory stuff associated with the everyday operations of the water utility.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I believe, is 25 071.
Yes. Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg.
Okay. So Director Terry, I have a question. And correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't Walter R Earl Marsville LLC, isn't that the same company that was responsible for low bidding or low balling us on a bid in the last season, making us not move forward with our paving season?
Council President, if I may, if, if I may make a suggestion to have a discussion about that. And I can answer Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg's question in executive session as it relates to current, recent litigation. More than happy to answer, but it's, it's the litigation that sprung about last week that I prefer discussing in executive session.
So I mean, should this resolution be like pulled or tabled at this time? Because there's, yeah.
I do not believe it should, but I think that requires a more robust discussion with council to determine what council's wishes are with respect to that. But it's, it's very intertwined with a recent litigation that we've been addressed with. More than happy to discuss it with council, but we, we should really have that discussion in private.
Council President, I would ask that we don't have any vote on this or anything until those questions are answered. Because this is really, this is concerning with regards to this contract and this contractor.
I agree. I was going to suggest if we can possibly move this to after executive session since we are going into executive session with a vote after. Is that, is that okay?
Whatever council's preference is, I think.
So we'll amend the agenda just to reflect this vote after the executive session.
Thank you.
Also, Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Just real quick, for Director Bridges, thank you for bringing that to our attention now. But moving forward, when we have things like this that are going to be on the agenda, could we know this ahead of time? So, you know, because we get into question mode and then just to find out now that there's pending litigation, I would just respectfully ask that before the council has this or before the council president is ready to present all this forward, that you take another look just through the agenda just to make sure and if there's anything pending litigation, that you flag it. So we just know to take it off the table that we have to talk about in executive session.
Yes, Council President, if I may. Uh, yes, Council President, if I may, yes, Council uh, uh, woman Feliciano, absolutely, as I said, this is extremely recent, like mid to late last week, after this agenda was adopted, but you are correct, and going forward, we will make sure to do a review prior to, to make sure that's not an issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Garcia, I believe we're moving on to ordinances.
Uh, certainly, Madam President, unless you wanted to ask for a motion to approve what is left for consent agenda at this time?
No. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, my apologies.
And if you'd like, I can go ahead and try and formulate that for you.
Please.
Certainly. Um, Madam President, if you wanted to ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda consisting of, and stop me if I miss anything, twenty five zero four three, zero four four,
Yes.
zero four five, zero four six, zero seventy, I'm sorry, zero seventy three, I apologize. If we're taking forty five, we are reserving, I'm the um, I will, I will be taking a motion to go into executive session.
Yes.
So to let that be understood, um, the four or five will go along with, and of course, you have the actual settlement resolution that I'll exclude in a moment. So that will lead me to oh four six, oh four seven three, excuse me, twenty five oh seventy three, oh seventy five, oh four seven, oh seventy two.
Madam President?
Yes.
Not twenty five dash zero seven five, we tabled that?
No, we already voted on that one.
The zoning board?
Um, oh, I'm sorry, oh, seven four. It is, uh, we voted on oh seven four, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We tabled zero seven five.
Zero seventy five, thank you, to oh forty seven, oh seventy two, oh five oh, oh five one, oh five two, oh five three, oh five four, oh five five, oh fifty six, oh fifty seven, oh fifty eight, fifty nine, sixty, sixty one, sixty two, sixty three, sixty four, sixty five, sixty six, sixty seven, sixty eight, seventy. That's all.
Yes.
And if.
Thank you. We have the motion to approve all of those.
One second, Council President?
Uh-oh, yes.
The ones, you, we left off the, the two with the county, right, for roll call?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
We left off twenty five oh seventy one, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve our first roll call resolution.
Yes, maybe I have a motion to.
Oh, go ahead.
Maybe I have a motion to approve twenty five dash forty eight for roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Epstein.
Noted. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
I apologize, what are we voting on right now? I'm sorry.
Oh, oh four eight.
South Broad Street.
Oh, yes.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Heck, yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve our next roll call resolution, twenty five dash zero four nine?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize, no, that is, that will be following executive session.
Right, but twenty five zero six nine, I believe. Seventy one.
I'm sorry, I see, oh, okay.
It's sixty nine.
Sixty nine, so moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Epstein.
Noted. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And Madam President, moving to ordinances at this time.
Yes.
We have no more roll call resolutions. Ordinances at this time, we have ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance is twenty five dash zero zero six, bond ordinance providing for phase five of the of lead, lead service line replacement program in the, in Trenton, but, in the Trenton Water Works Service Area by the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating twenty two million dollars, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of twenty two million dollars in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Maybe we have a motion to approve twenty five dash zero zero six.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty five dash zero zero seven, an ordinance amending the code of the City of Trenton, Chapter one thirteen, Food Handling, Article one, Retail Food Establishment Code, one hundred thirteen dash four fees.
Oh, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second. Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So just real quick, just in looking at this um ordinance and um it, the only change on here was, from what I saw, was the addition of the mobile food trucks under section two. So I will respectfully ask that moving forward, any changes um, when you're adding stuff should be bolded or, or um, italicized, show us where the change is so that we know. And then in other cases where things are taken away, as you attach the originals to do strike throughs, just so that council can easily find what it is that's happening. That's, that's my only comment. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Council President?
Oh.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Thank you. No, just uh, just really quickly, just a minor edit that I found, under administration fees on the second page, letter B, just add a W to review, you've previously reviewed and modified files. Thank you.
W is.
Madam President?
Council Vice President?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to uh make a comment, and maybe I have a question. There was a gentleman that had reached out to me uh around this time last month who owns a food truck, and he was not allowed to renew his food truck license that had expired on January thirty first. He was told when he had visited the administration that this, or it was alluded to, this ordinance coming down the pipe to city council. However, at the time, we were very much unaware of it, um, you know, I speak for myself, uh, just, but it seems we were very much unaware of it, but at the same time, um, I want to know if it's best practice to hold off on someone's license renewal at such a critical moment in their uh, expiration process and renewal process, to wait for something like this to happen. And I want to say, um, I, I have a problem with, you know, um, things being held off because of things that are going to happen in the future, because this man's livelihood and his family depends on revenue from his business, so, and I want to say, ordinances, this is the first reading, so then the second reading will be on March fourth. Then granted, council passes that, it does not take effect for another twenty days after that. That's about sixty days after the expiration of this man's license, that's sixty days of revenue lost that I must say, had, if it were me in his shoes, I would be absolutely livid because I would not be able to operate my business that I depend on paying my bills um with, so is there going to be some type of mediation or remediation for this man who's still in limbo waiting for this ordinance to pass?
Council President?
Yes.
I really need to provide um a little bit of background information, because obviously, council doesn't have the facts about this situation. Um, about three years ago, the previous council eliminated the, the city, the trucks, the food trucks from the ordinance. So, um, purposely or not, the Department of Health continued to issue um licenses that were not grounded on an ordinance. We cannot give permits when we don't have an ordinance that provides for those permits, that would be illegal. Fortunately for us, we have uh new environmental uh, health employees that happened to read the ordinance. And when new applicants came at the end of the year to apply for, for licenses, he said there is not such thing as food trucks in the ordinance in Trenton. So, he denied the licenses, and he did that correctly because acting out of just, okay, I want to uh make sure that people uh live and that they have a business, that is not a ground to provide for the license. So he did what he was supposed to do, revise the ordinance and uh work on that. Um, if anybody will have approach, because there is also um discretion in administration to do certain things. But really, and I am not trying to be offensive with this comment, um, but just realistic, right? If you are procuring a, an administrative uh benefit or an administrative um diligence, you should come to administration, going to council members does not solve the matter, right? The gentleman that Councilwoman Edwards referred to never approached administration to solve his problem, right? So, uh, up to this day, right, so we have discussed internally how to solve the problem, but he never came to solve the problem. So we can only give the information that we can provide to people when they ask for it. We are trying to solve the problem, um, and uh we were also told that at this time of the year, food trucks are not operable because um, their system is frozen. They need water to operate in their system, and most likely, they are not able to, so I really, I'm not sure that we are um, in the middle of his livelihood, but we have a solution if he comes to, to talk to us. We are trying to solve an issue, we are trying to add the food trucks to the ordinance so that we can actually issue permits, right? Other people have permits that were uh probably issued last year. Um, unfortunately, those were not issued adequately, and I really, really uh give kudos to that specific um, environmental health engineer who decided that he was going to read the ordinance and found out that we really cannot be issuing permits for food trucks.
Madam President? Council Vice President?
Thank you, uh, B A Richardson, I really appreciate the insight into, and clarity into the situation. Um, just bringing you up to speed that on um, January twenty seventh, I did forward this over when a gentleman had called me, he physically came down to the administration, to the department, and addressed this, and he provided um, information of the employee who had gave him the information. I then forwarded it to uh, Renai and I C C U and Colin on it, um, explaining in detail what was going on, and Colin did, uh, Mr. Cherry, he did respond on January thirtieth to let me know that the situation was being looked into and that he would let me know once we have more concrete information, but I had not gotten any updates after that. So that's why I still have a misunderstanding with the situation. Um, I was definitely unaware that the previous council eliminated the trucks from the ordinance, because when I looked up in the E codes, it's still there, so that change has not been codified yet, and that's where the confusion is coming in at, because when our E codes is showing up, as it's still a process that we are continuing to practice. And being that he, he has been issued licenses in twenty twenty four and in previous years, that furthermore, you know, confuses the situation, so um, and with us, this being unforeknown to us, that this had occurred and that this was coming down the pipe, that's why, you know, you heard the comments that you heard today.
No, and I, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but I, I got your emails and um, and probably that's one of the things made us, you know, move quickly into, there are other, other, um, it's gonna look like a repetition, because pretty soon, we will come back with another ordinance that we have been um, working on a while with some council members, if you don't mind, may I mention your name? We have been working with um, Councilwoman Feliciano and with Brandon Garcia for over six months trying to, to incorporate other changes regarding um, food truck, but unbeknown to us, that is not even a, an ordinance for food trucks, so um, we will be reconvening, talking about other uh, changes that you will see probably within the next couple of months. Um, but yes, uh, thank you for bringing that information to our attention. Um, but what I should have said is that that gentleman never came back to try to resolve that matter. Um, but we are ready, we are not going to be waiting for this, the ordinance, but we will have to do some you know, exercise some administrative discretion to solve any problems. So far, we know about him, but other people that would come to, to renew their licenses would run into the same problem. We were basically praying that that would not happen until this resolu, this ordinance was adopted, but we are ready to to respond in a matter, in a manner that will be, you know, accommodating to those folks that would approach you or us within the next month or so, until this resolu, the ordinance is adopted.
Okay, I appreciate that. If we can, if we can get a response to the emails that I've been sending, because I also followed up on February fifth to check in on this, because he's been reaching out to me um, as his point of contact, as his representative, to reach out to the administration, because he wasn't getting anywhere with the employees, so um, I'll send it over again, just to bring it back to the top of your email. Um, but if, if this can be explained to him, so that he's not left in limbo trying to figure out what he needs to do, so that'd be awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, so I just have two questions uh regarding this. First one is, um, and thank you for, you know, providing the previous ordinance, which I noticed uh, the second reading was adopted on, I'm sorry, it was adopted on March fifth, about a week before uh, the country was shut down with COVID in twenty twenty. What was the reasoning for removing um, food trucks in the first place?
I honestly don't remember, but I think it had to do with some complaints of uh.
I know it was five years ago, but I just.
I really don't remember.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I don't want to adventure, because maybe I will become really mean.
No problem. And my other question is, as far as the fees themselves, when uh was the last time they were raised? Previously?
I don't know.
Okay, if we could find out, I was just curious. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. I believe we're at roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Noted, we got you, yes. Uh, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance, twenty five dash zero zero eight, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as one ninety six Pennington Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block sixty seven oh five, lot four, pursuant to N J S A forty A colon twelve dash thirteen C to Charles C Lewis, for the sale price of five thousand dollars.
Maybe we have a motion to approve.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Eight.
So moved.
Yes, and yes, and yes, and yes.
Yes.
I'm just gonna go to roll call.
Yes.
Council, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Oh, yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Three times, yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
I wish Mr. Lewis was still here, yes.
I was just gonna say the same thing. He actually was here and he left, but my vote is yes also, Mr. Garcia.
Noted, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And this time, I believe that brings us to public comments. To the public, public comment will be five minutes in, five minutes for each individual. You may address any matter that you wish. The council is not obligated to respond. Our first individual will be Stacy Stratton. Miss Stratton, forgive me, I have had this clipboard for a bit of time here. I don't know if there's anybody who's come in a little later. I will ask for a last call for public comment. Is there anybody in the, any members of the public that wish to speak for public comment?
That didn't sign?
That did not sign this clipboard. Your name, sir? You're right here, got it. Anyone else? No hearing, none. Ms. Stacy Stratton, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, council members.
Good evening.
I want to take a minute to thank you for your time tonight and allow me to speak.
Our address, can you give us our address?
Yes.
To the public as well, if you'll please state your name and address for the record, each individual.
Okay. My name is Stacy Stratton, and I've owned my home at 50 Bismarck Avenue for 10 years now. The parking situation has always been a problem. However, in the last couple of years, it has become unbearable. There are owners and or renters of homes with three to six cars who have driveways and still park several of their vehicles on the street, taking up spaces for others who don't have driveways to park. I have one vehicle and it's often impossible for me to find parking on my street, let alone near my home, which leaves me with no other choice but to have friends and families pick me up if I want to leave or save my spot so I can drive with their vehicle. I've contacted the city in order to have my, front of my home evaluated to see if I qualified to have a driveway installed. I've also contacted the city to inquire about creating, moving my fence line in my backyard to create a parking pad space out back, to which I've been told no to both. I was denied a driveway based on the amount of space that I have in the front of my home. I believe I'm inches of being short of what the ordinance allows. I was told that I'm not allowed to create a parking pad out back in my yard, moving my fence line in to provide me with consistent parking because I'm not to alter the green space. In addition, if I were allowed to create a parking pad out back, my concern is that Sherwood Alley that is behind my home is unpaved and the alley is not maintained, meaning there's low-lying, overhanging brush, which could, both being unpaved and with this brush, cause damage to my vehicle if I chose to utilize that as a means of parking. So I'm coming to you this evening with the hopes that you could maybe come up with a solution or a recommendation or an ordinance that would ensure that I had a more consistent parking space allocation for my car.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have one other thing, if you don't mind if that's all right.
I just have time.
I have a recommendation and I'm hoping that maybe council will consider this. I know parking is a concern for a lot of us who live in the city. I may have one vehicle and I know that Bismarck Avenue is, I've been made aware, on the list to be scheduled for paving. I would like the council to consider potentially creating space markers, one space for each home in order to park when the repaving is put in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Brady.
Good evening, councils.
Good evening.
Louis Brady, 618 Franklin Street. I'm coming to you tonight because on Mondays and Thursdays, we have street cleaning. On Tuesdays and Fridays is on the opposite side of our street. Unfortunately, they don't do our side. They go on the opposite side on Tuesdays and Fridays. They don't come on our side on Mondays and Thursdays. And I had a, I had to, I asked the gentleman that was driving the truck. He says, oh, we come out and we do your side. And I said, no, you don't. I'm sitting there watching him going up and down. He does not come on our side. He goes on the opposite side in front of, in front of, not in front of our house, but on the other side of the street. And I said, you know what? You just have to come out and you have to do it. I understand that they're getting two new, new street cleaners, but come on, we can't keep moving our cars back and forth. And it's, and my father, he can't move the car because he's handicapped. But still and all, you know, and they said, oh, well, if you don't move it, you get a ticket. We've gone through that three times. He's gotten a ticket twice. I don't know what else we can do. I'd like to find out if we can, what we can do, you know, because of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Elijah Dixon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to speak with regards to not a resolution nor ordinance.
Mr. Dixon, I don't mean to interrupt you if you would just, thank you.
Elijah Dixon, 134 East Hanover Street. Sorry about that. Elijah, I just said that. Yeah, I'm here to speak with regards to a item that was on the docket for last, I guess it was February 7th, that was tabled for further consideration or supposed to be tabled for further consideration and put up for a vote this evening. And that docket number was 25-030, Resolution Awarding a Contract for Equity by Design for Consulting Services for the Creation of a Five-Year UEZ Development Plan. It's not on the docket. And so I'm just, I'm not sure who I would necessarily bring that up to. I did, prior to this meeting, I did seek further follow-up or clarification to see if the couple of council members who had questions, just to see if their questions were satisfied. I was told that they were. Yeah, and so this is a very, not just for us and our company, but I think this is a very important initiative for the city. The city receives over $3 million from the State Department of Community Affairs for the UEZ program, at least for calendar year 2025. And the DCA has said that all 32 UEZs, all 32 municipalities that have UEZ funding, that they are not going to be approving the implementation of any UEZ-funded projects until the five-year plan is created, which is why, you know, when we were notified in the fourth quarter of last year that our bid was successful, you know, I went ahead and I had, you know, we had shored up our staffing. I actually have one of our team members here tonight. I know who I referenced potentially during the last meeting saying that we had made these hires. And, you know, I did not follow up to see until I was sure that it was gonna be on the docket tonight. I mean, I probably should have, but if anyone could provide clarification as to what the status of this docket item is, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Forgive me, Malia Lacy. Did I get that correct? Malia, thank you.
Malia Lacy, 236 East Hanover Street. Good afternoon, my name is Malia Lacy and I'm currently a high school senior attending Trenton Central High School and working as a project assistant for the company Equity by Design with Elijah Dixon. So far, my main reason for joining this organization has been wonderful as well as giving me a new perspective as to how the crooks in beneath Trenton are working very hard as to improving and molding my home as a city for the past five years. Although I was born in Trenton, I unfortunately moved to North Carolina and came back around eight years ago, back to my home state. And I'm very grateful that people are working hard to improve for the future generation and Equity by Design is improving that unbendously every single day as I work with new projects like the 1,000 Trees in Trenton Initiative and the R29 Campaign. I'm very grateful and I am also in supportive of the motion and support for consulting services of the five-year development plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jeffrey Lorenzi.
Evening, members of council. Jeff Florenti, 464 Hamilton Avenue. I had come here this evening to be wallpaper, wearing a Kingsbury Corporation hat for what was supposed to have been a presentation from our redevelopment partners who failed to tell me that it has been moved. However, I arrived just as Marge Caldwell was interacting with the council ahead of her appointment to the Trenton Parking Authority. And since just this very morning, the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation Board, on which I sit, approved a $355,000 grant to the Parking Authority for the pre-demolition work on that decrepit parking garage. I thought I would wait, I didn't think I would be waiting two hours, but I thought I would wait in order to be able to report to the council that indeed, progress happens. And it was a painstakingly negotiated contract. We are delighted. And since I emailed to some of my colleagues on the board the fact that Marge was, excuse me, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson was being appointed to the Parking Authority, it elicited hope that the authority may become a more constructive partner with the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation Board. As was noted, I think by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, the CCRC has been holding a legislative appropriation of $1.5 million for three years now, four years, that would help in getting that demolished. And we would hope a redevelopment facing Mill Hill Park that is historically consistent. Mentioning history, there was also a debate earlier in this evening's proceedings about the Eagle Tavern. That is one block outside the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation's district. But I would hope that the council will do everything possible to get the Eagle Tavern up and running as quickly as possible to be able to receive guests in next year's semi-quintcentennial, the 250th anniversary. The CCRC has been trying and found the usual bureaucratic obstacles at the state level that have delayed it somewhat in playing a role, a catalytic role in enhancing the historical assets of the historical core of Trenton to be presentable and indeed attractive. And we look to be doing more and hope that the council will be able to help in identifying places for a hard infrastructure investment or ways in which we can facilitate the heritage tourism promotion. But they both have to go hand in hand. It's not simply tourism promotion if what you have to promote looks decrepit to people. We need really to be looking to make it look as attractive, maybe not Williamsburg, but closer to it. And we would be at your disposal in that regard, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzi.
Victor Irazari.
Good evening, it's always a pleasure. Was it Director of Police, Police Director, Mr. Wilson, glad to see you again, sir.
This is.
Victor Irazari, 19 Mallin Avenue.
Thank you.
I have two things right here. With who I call the great white chief, Donald Trump. As he, and I agree with what he's doing with the Western Hemisphere about taking over Alaska and Canada and the Panama Canal. He skipped, he missed out on Cuba, but ICE is still available. I agree with that, but what I also noticed that he's bypassing Puerto Rico in a sense.
Mr. Victor, hold on one second, excuse me one second.
I dearly apologize. We just have to put a pause because we no longer have a quorum on the dais. So if you could just pause your comments for a moment, not to stop you, just pause it.
We're just gonna pause it just because we need two more people to come back from the restroom.
Oh, okay, sure, sure.
Two more, if you just don't mind waiting a short period of time. No one's gonna do anything until the.
Just give it a pause, all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Solis, sir.
Madam President, I believe we have a quorum if we include our virtual members. So, Mr. Irazari, go right ahead.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, two things I'd like to say is uh, one is uh, with uh, the takeover of uh, the great white owl that I call him as well, President Donald Trump is uh, I think he's planning to take over the Western Hemisphere. And I say already bypass Cuba, I believe, but ICE is still available. What he's just left out is Puerto Rico and uh, being that Trenton is, to me, it was one of the, Puerto Ricans of Trenton were a pioneer people that broke in uh, the East Coast. Where uh, my people, my grandfather used to migrate Puerto Ricans from Puerto Rico and helped establish in a place called King's Farm and from there they uh stretched out of uh, across the United States. Uh, my point is saying that uh, uh, he made a comment, one of his associates made a comment towards Puerto Rico, called it a garbage state or something like that, or garbage lands. And uh, he has uh, yet not even uh mentioned it in his plan of uh how he is gonna deal with it as far either he's gonna force their hand to become statehood or uh let it become a state of Commonwealth, which I don't think, I think they's gonna, it's gonna be a squeeze play where he gonna eliminate the Commonwealth and make them decide whether they're gonna be independent and controlled by someone else other than the United States or force them into statehood. Uh, I understand that at one time, when they wanted to be independent, they wanted to emulate their politics according to Canada and Canada's like a off branch of the British Empire or Europe, which he is not pleased with. And therefore, now that he's planning to take over uh, uh, Canada, again, that uh, uh, does not give a good, a good opportunity to Puerto Rico to really decide whether they wanna be independent or statehood. I think he wants to force their hand to statehood. Uh, along with, again, Puerto Ricans of Trenton, New Jersey, uh, they're not being recognized too much any longer as uh, a population other than uh, melted in or um, hidden away in, in what is considered uh, Hispanic or Latinos. I'm gonna put that to the side and uh, along with uh, I got interested, uh, Councilwoman Williams over there, one time was saying. And I got, I started uh, looking up into it. Uh, it says that uh, more than $6 million are collected from a cannabis tax that has been sitting unused, even though the state's cannabis agency has since uh spending recommendation to the legislature for three years. The millions of revenue collected from uh, what's called the social equity exercise fee has been accumulated since recreational cannabis sales began in 2022. And the tax is paid by cannabis calculators and the revenue is intended to be used for the projects in towns impacted by the war on drugs. That's Trenton. Now, as I was coming here today, I saw a man in a wheelchair and uh, on Warren Street and Bank Street. And I spoke to him, I said, I see how you on a, you on a job and uh, maybe we laughed at it a little bit. I gave him $20. What I'm saying is, it's gonna be low uh, freezing, I think, tonight and, you know, several, the next few days. And uh, I understand law enforcement, like I'm hearing the awesome, but I'm saying law enforcement already has, they're overloaded. And with uh, the overthrow of America, what Donald Trump is doing, and I agree because I'm an ex-soldier, uh, is that uh, he wants to uh, protect the Western Hemisphere, which I agree with. Well, he should calculate it in South America as well and that'll cover that, in a little part of Africa, West Africa. Now, uh, this is gonna get, it's gonna get violent, uh, crime is gonna go up and you can't blame law enforcement because they can't do so much. And I'm also on the way here, I understand that uh, up in New York, there's a prisons, the uh, police are, I mean, prison guards are walking off the job because unsafe parking conditions and the governor is contemplating sending the National Guards within a few days if they don't go back to work. So I'm saying where is the money that's supposed to come to Trenton, like Ms. Williams said, so we can get people off the streets, I guess make safe houses or boarding houses for people, for the homeless or do something with that money and unboard these boarded houses so they can get in at least uh, they're gonna hustle up, have somewhere to run into and come back, come back out and not, you know, uh, be arrested or die in the streets from uh, freezing conditions. Uh, that's my concern for tonight and uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Victor.
Kristy Huff.
I believe she left.
Oh, okay. In that case, Madam President, I do not have any other individuals listed for public comment this evening. If you wish, you can start with any council member for civic comment.
Right, before we start, I just wanted to ask if BA Richardson would be able to come forward just so that um, we can give some clarity to um, 25 dash 030 for Mr. Dixon. Um, if she's able to come forward. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Um, that resolution, I'm sorry, Council President. That resolution was pulled the last time, tabled.
Tabled.
Uh, because some members of the council requested some information. To my knowledge, we did not provide the information that you needed. And we also did not submit the resolution for, we didn't resubmit the resolution. So, my apologies, um, and to Mr. Dixon. I really don't know the reasons, but I know that we didn't provide the information or resubmit the resolution for this docket.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. So just um, for clarity, uh, Mr. Dixon, we apologize that it was an oversight and uh, that they felt like the, the responses weren't given to us um, in the appropriated time, but we will make sure that it's on for March, for the first meeting in March. Thank you. Um, Mr. Garcia, if a civic comment, we can begin with uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Certainly.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate it. Um, so I'm glad we cleared up. Thank you, uh, BA Richardson for clearing up situation regarding Mr. Dixon and that particular uh, resolution. And um, Ms. Stratton, just want to say, we're all very sympathetic to your uh, your plight with parking. It's a terrible situation throughout the state. I'm gonna talk about some other issues even tonight. I hope it can get rectified if you've talked to zoning uh, regarding uh, parking and perhaps maybe uh, a variance could be worked out, maybe, maybe not, but at least that's an option. So, uh, first thing is tomorrow night is our North Ward City Police Advisory Council meeting at 5:30 at uh, Galley Baptist Church, 440 Martin Luther King Boulevard. Uh, if you live in the North Ward, have business in the North Ward, uh, please join us to discuss uh, community police issues uh, with our police department. It's very, very helpful. The Trenton Community Street Teams come as well as representing some other organizations, including Capitol Health. So I hope to see you there tomorrow night and please spread the word because there's a lot of community meetings that members on council have each month to try to communicate and make our city better. So regarding street sweeping, um, I did send an email about this, but there's a situation on uh, Carroll Street, on the odd side of Carroll, running from across from the rescue mission towards the federal courthouse. Uh, signage is a bit confusing, so I'd like to uh, speak with, you know, have the administration take a look at that about why uh, street sweeping isn't occurring on the odd side of the street. And perhaps there might be some confusion on not, you know, why the street sweeper is not actually showing up. But it's very, very important and it's a good thriving neighborhood, long-time homeowners living there. Uh, third, I want to read to the record as quickly as I can uh, an email I received from a constituent uh, that lives in the uh, Mill Hill section. But this, they talk about a situation that is occurring in a lot of other neighborhoods. "Last week, most of us on our block post parked on Short Greenwood and got egregious parking violations. I will be going to court to fight my ticket because this is getting out of control at this point. My ticket was for parking within 25 feet, yes, 25 feet of the curb. I've never heard of this, plus uh, there is multiple car lengths from the curb, which is absurd. Not including the fact that I have never in my years seen a sign that notes that you must leave 25 feet from your car to the curb. All other vehicles parked closer to the curb than I were seemingly not ticketed. I have always been ticketed for parking uh, the opposite. I've also been ticketed for parking the opposite way on Greenwood, uh, Short Greenwood, which the parking enforcement erroneously marks as a one-way and it is not. Um, if anyone in the neighborhood has uh, received recent tickets, that they may not have given, uh, my constituent encouraged other neighbors to fight them because they need to get awareness." There's beliefs out there, of course, that, you know, there's a quota for tickets being offered. I know that we've been told that that's not the case, but the situation's getting very frustrating for our residents and a lot of neighbors. And I'll be happy to provide or connect uh, this constituent with um, parking enforcement or administration to try to straighten this out. And we have to get this straightened out soon because this is becoming a crisis. Uh, it may not be a health crisis, it may not be a crisis where someone's gonna lose their life, but it eventually could if someone can't drive to a hospital or can't get adequate ambulance or fire services because we have cars parking all the way to the corner that don't get ticketed. But then we have things like people parking in fire hydrants that don't get ticketed for that either. But then neighbors like this uh, get ticketed for reasons that really don't make sense. So I look forward to helping connect on this particular situation, but also, you know, even our businesses. Uh, there's restaurant business on uh, East Hanover Street. There's restaurant businesses certainly in downtown on Warren Street and South, and uh, North Broad and Broad Street. But particularly on South Warren, we have businesses that are really struggling because they can't get dedicated parking for Grubhub, for Uber Eats, for customers to come. Uh, been told that apparently Uber Eats and Grubhub have some kind of designation within their app for drivers to not deliver from certain places because they get as a high perponderance of tickets, which further hurts our businesses. So I really hope we can get a solution on South Warren Street in the next 60 days. That would include two council meetings for an ordinance to be introduced and for it to be approved. And I can't see this council not approving something that would help our businesses, but they're getting desperate. And they share that uh, with really fear, a lot of fear in their eyes. Thank you. God bless and I hope to see you again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So, um, to Stacy Stratton, I um, I'm sorry for the issues that you're having. I do like that you not just came with here with a issue, but that you also came with here with a resolve. I uh, I love the idea of hopefully when um, it gets repaved, hopefully we can get so that you have markings in front of your homes that you can have a designated uh, space. That would be great. Um, we have it in Mill Hill where folks have, um, at least they have uh, tickets, I believe, or cards that they give them so they can go and park in their um, community and others are told. So even if they give those out and they limit it to the number of vehicles, I'm hopeful that that is done so that others are not making it uncomfortable for others or trying to just live their lives. Um, Lou, I am so sorry for what you're still going through and this is not the first time that you brought these parking, um, the street issue with these um, cleaning to us. I believe that someone needs to go out there on a Monday, on a Thursday, when um, they're supposed to come, after their time has come. I think that you should call the department, you should call the city and ask them to come back and take a look and so they can see that on those days when they're supposed to be coming here, coming to your side of the street, that they actually see that it has not been addressed. I think that will help. And then maybe you can get better clarity since the uh, driver seems to be dismissive, it sounds like to you, um, which is not respectful. You're, we, we pay your taxes here and you should be respected at any, any, every time. Um, to Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry for um, that uh, your docket was, your item was not on the docket and I look forward to it being on the next one. And it was pleased to talk it as just being an oversight and not something that was done intentionally um, with you. So thank you and we thank you for what you bring to our city and to our community. Um, and Malia, Ms. Lacy, it was great hearing you. I loved hearing you. You speak with eloquence. And to hear you as a high school student speaking the way you did is absolutely encouraging. And uh, I was glad to hear you on this evening. Jeff left already, so we'll deal with him. Um, but um, I wanted to say thank you to our departments, the salting that was done this past week, the past, with these past few storms that we've had. You were absolutely fantastic. I personally went up and down side streets because I wanted to see what they looked like. I got phone calls, phone calls, positive phone calls from residents saying thank you for their side streets having been tended to sell to our departments. We wanted to say thank you for being so diligent and taking care of our city. And Mr. Lewis, I wish he was here. I wanted to say yay, his ordinance is finally on the docket. Um, I'm glad for him. He has been very diligent. He's been steadfast. And I'm glad to see that this finally is happening on his behalf. Um, outside of that, I ask you to pay attention to the bulletin boards that you see when you're leaving City Hall. There are a lot of announcements that are going on, a lot of things that are going on in the city from the Easter um, egg hunt that is going to be at Cabal Park to the Trenton um, unveiling of the treasures, which will be at our West Ward Community Center and so much more. There's a lot going on, so please just be mindful of what's going on. To our directors, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you put in behind the scenes, in front of the scenes. Your departments are absolutely um, kicking it out the park. Everybody is not going to say thank you all the time, but I just want you to know that you're making a difference, a positive impact in our community and we are appreciative of you. To our BA, uh, Richardson, thank you, just thank you um, for all that you do, for always being at the ready at your post. You are appreciated. And to Colin for being here every single night and every session, you are appreciated. And of course, to our um, fantastic council that is in front of me, thank you for being on point, thank you for ever being present and being on top of your job. And to our clerk's office, the same thing, thank you for being present. Um, with that, I close out with a portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank my colleagues for being phenomenal and doing their work with good heart. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
Am I unmuted now? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Um, just a few things, um, you know, apologies for not being there in council tonight.
Councilwoman Figueroa, can you come closer? We can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're saying, you're in a distance.
How about now?
No.
No? I had the volume all the way up.
I can't hear. Is it because?
Alright.
We'll, we'll come back to Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
Madam President, can, may we try something technically real quick?
Sure.
Go ahead. Got it? Very well, I'm sorry. Madam President, uh, if you want to go to your next uh, council member.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Um, to the council, thank you for a very robust meeting, right? Thank you for compromise and for collaboration um, and for leadership. Um, I would like to express to um, the young lady on Bismarck Avenue, um, sorry that the parking is still an issue for you. I do like the idea about the um, the markers. Um, we had discussed this before about that. And so, parking is an issue throughout the city and I know everybody is tired of hearing it. We're tired of saying it, I'm sure, right? Um, and something does need to be done. Um, we had discussed back a couple years ago, having the conversation when, when constituents that live on um, Front Street were complaining about repetitive tickets that were happening, like what can be done? And at that time, it was explained about the, the city planning. And as I've said, like at one time, the people that plan the city, they figured this, in this area, they have this many cars or these people could walk or these people could catch a bus and all of this and that, right? Well, the city has changed. And so while with that change, um, would, would have to come a survey of the city to figure out what is going on, right? And then to see how signage and everything can be changed. It's just something that we need to do, right? Even if we pick section by section, um, we have to start somewhere and we can't keep putting it off because nothing is changing. And when we had people that came before us that were living in apartment buildings. And when we had people that came before us that were living in apartment buildings that couldn't park in front of their house, or they were afraid to leave that car by a certain time because they were going to get a ticket because they weren't supposed to park there in front of the house, at a certain time, it baffles the mind, especially when we have people that are paying taxes, people that are paying rent, people that are living here, and we promise them a good quality of life, right? That's our mantra, we want you to have a good quality of life. While I understand that they have to issue parking tickets when you violate the law, I understand and I respect that part of it, but then as a city, we also need to look now and figure out how can we correct some of these things so that we can uphold our end of the bargain as well. And so I'm hopeful and I'm sure that we'll be looking into alternative solutions to try to help figure this out, be it a parking permit, be it a space marker, whatever it is, right? And then talking to zoning about what your dilemma is, if people are coming to the table, as Councilwoman Frisbee said, you come with solutions, then we need to start listening because it seems like, you know, internally, while everybody has their ideas of what will take a priority, and I think that we have a wonderful, we have wonderful staff on deck or people in position, there comes a time when we have to look past, we just don't have the money for certain things. We have money for some things, and then we turn away from other things. So even if we start small with what we look at, we need to start somewhere, and we need to do something just to put forth a good effort to let the people see that we hear them, we acknowledge them, and we are working forward to help make some kind of resolve to the issues that are placed before them. The streets, the street cleaning, I'm still, you know, I don't even know, you know, they put the signs up, the sweeper is coming, they ain't there, yet people still get tickets. I don't understand how you get a ticket if the street sweep is not coming, right? So there needs to be something done about that. Y'all know you're not going down the street, then stop giving the people the tickets until you fix the machines and you're going down the street. I mean, to me, that's just an easy fix, I don't know, but that's just me. I would be pretty ticked off if I was getting tickets and you're telling me move my car, and then the people do not show up. So we need to fix that, we need to fix that. Mr. Dixon, we didn't know, sorry about that, you know? Hopefully next time, I'm sure Council President will make sure, right? We're going to have it at the next, at the next meeting, so that should be taken care of. And Malaya, excellent, thank you for coming forward and speaking. We appreciate you. And Jeff has gone. Everybody have a great night, be safe. It's cold outside, it's cold in here. Thank you all for hanging out with us. I'm hopeful that at our next meeting, the chambers will be heated prior to us coming in here, so that way we are all comfortable as we sit up here and do the business of the city. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feliciano. Council Vice President, oh wait, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
Yes, can you guys hear me now?
A little better.
No?
A little better.
Hello? You guys hear?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I don't understand what happened. I mean, you guys, okay. Yeah, you guys kicked me out and they wouldn't let me go back in, so.
Councilwoman, I'm going to stop you, you have a better idea. I'm going to give you a phone call very quickly, if that's all right with you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you guys fine.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what happened. You guys kicked me out of the meeting, and then, I mean, you guys could hear me the whole meeting until that point, so I don't know what happened. But anyways, I don't, I have a lot, you know, thanks, thank everybody for bearing with me and staying home. I needed to stay home today, obviously, but the only comment that I have is about the street sweepers. Thank you, Mr. Brady, for bringing that up. I know that's been an issue for you, but it's been an issue around the city. I've been dealing with it for many, many, many months, I mean, going on past a year. I am having a meeting that I set up some time ago with the administration, with Public Works, that meeting is tomorrow. So if anybody has any questions, please email me your questions, that I could present them at the meeting tomorrow regarding specific to street sweepers and sanitation, and I will have them addressed, and I will get that information out to the public as best that I can as we are moving to try to find solutions. I agree with Councilwoman Feliciano, we shouldn't be ticketing anybody for not moving their vehicle if we're not getting a street sweeper coming down the street. That is happening far too often, and there's way too many streets that are not being touched and have not seen a street sweeper whatsoever. You know, I'm thankful that the public is welcoming street sweepers, they want sanitation, they want streets to be clean, so we need to definitely do all that we can. I know we are waiting for the street sweepers that we approve purchase of to meet the streets, so hopefully I get some really valuable information tomorrow that I could get back to everybody. With that, everybody just get home safe tonight and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all here today on this very cold and bitter evening. I want to first say, this has been a busy past couple of weeks, and I want to give out some thank yous to the administration, to Business Administrator Maria Richardson, and the Assistant Business Administrator Colin Cherry, as well as the Directors of Public Works and HED for a meeting with Council President and I last week, and also with Councilwoman Feliciano and Williams regarding Economic Development Ad hoc Committee. So we, I'm very excited at a lot of the redevelopment projects, some of them we're not able to speak of yet until they're available for public consumption, but there are some things underway in the city that a lot of us will be very excited about once they come to fruition, once we're able to really speak publicly about it. One being Kingsbury, obviously, the demolitions has begun on the low rises, and the renovations of the high rises are scheduled to happen in the first quarter of this year to begin, at the end of the first quarter of this year. So there's going to be some other movement going, going around that area as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for meeting with us and for your time and attention on all these matters, and I, you know, in addition to a lot of the things on the list, we're looking forward to addressing some of the areas in the city, like Hermitage Plaza, and Old Mercer Hospital, Bud's Barbecue, the Strip Mall, or the Strip, I want to call it Strip Mall, is it called Strip Mall still these days? The little cluster of storefronts on Edgewood and Bruce Park Drive, and some of the former dry cleaner locations, various locations around the city. These are some of the issues that a lot of the public has been concerned about and expressing interest in wanting to see redevelopment. And I want to say, of course, the parking issues are a huge area, and thank you to the administration for meeting with us last week on that as well. So we did address a lot of the issues that was brought to our attention, to the city council regarding downtown areas, commercial vehicles, the lack of parking around the city, ticketing, excessive ticketing, and somewhat of unwarranted ticketing. We have addressed all these concerns, and we have requested a study for the city to determine whether some of these no parking areas, like for example, on Lafayette, on the side of the hotel and garage, areas along South Broad Street going up the hill by Turning Point Church, some of those areas that we brought attention to around Mill Hill Park and throughout the city, we have addressed and asked why. Some of these things are extremely outdated by decades, so we asked for a study to see where we can increase parking around the entire city, not just downtown. And then also, I wanted to include in this study, you know, areas like Ms. Stacy had suggested earlier, with if there's properties large enough to have off-street parking in the front or the back of their properties, that could help with a lot of the on-street parking for the houses that do not have the capability to have off-street parking or don't have any existing off-street parking available right now. So I'm hoping that could be in the study as well, so we can see how we can add some off-street parking, not just on-street parking, and redirecting some of the traffic in the city to create additional parking lanes around Warren Street on the right-hand side. So I want to say, I don't know, I think that might be all of my comments. Well, oh, the windstorm lately, I want to thank the city for their rapid response with all of the downed trees, the wires, there was a transformer that blew that took out blocks and blocks of the West Ward electricity for a matter of maybe two days, if I'm not mistaken. So I want to say thank you to the rapid response to that, and I just want to encourage everyone to use our warming stations when you need them at the Jenny Stubblefield Senior Center and at the Sam Naples Senior Center on Chestnut Avenue. If you need them, they are there. So stay warm, stay safe, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Thank you, everyone, for being present. I just want to make sure I get everything. First, I want to thank, as stated before, to BA Richardson, our mayor, and our administration for addressing a lot of the emergency issues that happened over the last couple of days, and I know we had a roof come off, there was a lot of things going on, so I just want to say thank you for addressing those. Quickly, to Ms. Stratton from Bismarck, as stated, also, I apologize for that. I know it's a nuisance that you can't park in front of your own home. I know, as Council Vice President stated, she and I had just recently met about some of the solutions that we can do, addressing and trying to amend some of our ordinances, trying to figure out ways to find some type of resolution for our residents here in the city of Trenton. I know we all have been working on it because it's just been a pain for not just you all, but for us also, but just know that we are trying to find ways to do it legally and make sure that it's set in stone as far as ordinances are concerned. To Mr. Elijah, again, we want to apologize for that oversight. We'll make sure that that's on, on March 4th meeting. To Mr. Ozario, really quickly, I just want to say that the term that was used by the Trump supporter was island, Puerto Rico was an island of garbage. So I was hearing when you said, I know you can figure it out, but that's what was said. And just sending out some prayers to Psycho Kings, Mr. Brown, also to the McCoy family who also lost a loved one. I want to thank our Council Vice President for leading the meeting when I, in my absence on February 4th. And thank you to my colleagues and to the clerk and everyone, just for having grace for us, as we all are diligently working and we're all catching things that we have may have missed. So I just want to thank you all for that, as this is a new role for myself and our Council Vice President, so there may be some mistakes, but I want to thank you all for everyone doing their due diligence. And then just also, just for the public, just to know that sometimes you may not hear all of us ask questions, and that's just because of questions that are submitted prior to this meeting, to our administrators, and then they provide responses to us prior to getting to the council. And I know that has been stated in the past from our previous council president, but just wanted to reiterate that so everyone is aware that sometimes you may not hear us ask questions throughout the meeting, and it's only because we've already received those responses prior to. And just another couple of quick announcements for Black History Month. Happy Black History Month, because I wasn't here at the beginning of the month, but we have a couple of, shout out to the city of Trenton for doing their Black History Month also earlier this month. We also have the City of Trenton Presents, what is Jazz, a Black History Month presentation, and that's at the West Ward Recreation Center, February 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Also at the Trenton Library, you have the Black History Open Mic, that is this Saturday from 12:00 to 2:00. And then also, the Trent House will have Four Centuries of African-American Soldiers, and that is this Saturday also, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And I also want to shout out, of course, my beautiful sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, hosting a beautiful Black History program for our children this past Saturday. I believe that is all my announcements, so I just want to say thank you all for being here this evening, and thank you to our administrators and our clerk, as always, and George, for being present with us this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, thank you, Madam President. At this time, if you'd like to motion, ask for a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, may we have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, Councilwoman, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
I kind of heard a yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. We do anticipate to the public, we do anticipate a vote coming out of executive session this evening, I'm correct in that, and thank you very much.